All right, we're coming back from closed session. Do we have anything to report, city attorney?
No reportable action.
Thank you. We're going to adjourn closed session right now and move into open session. We are going to convene the housing authority meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Beckles.
President.
Commissioner Bowie.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Commissioner Fahn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
And Chair Nguyen.
Yes. Do we have any oral communications for the housing authority?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, let me just double check here real quick. Okay. We have items 4A and B.
Items 4A and B will be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless separate discussion, and our action is requested by a commissioner.
I'll move them. Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who moved.
Jones.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to take a roll call vote. Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Fahn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
And Chair Nguyen.
Aye. Any matters from fellow commissioners, directors, staff? None?
None.
Then we're going to adjourn the housing authority and convene the city council meeting at this time. We'll take a moment for our commissioners, who will not be part of the city council Okay, we're going to convene the city council meeting here. Roll call.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Fahn.
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Aye. I'd like to ask Mr. Okereki to deliver the invocation. We're all gonna rise, and after that, I'd like to ask Mr. McIntosh to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, be with us this evening as we gather. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and grant that in serving our community, we may serve you. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I haven't faced the flag, which I have to your heart, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a presentation tonight.
Item 7A is a community spotlight in recognition of the Farmers and Merchants Bank's 60th anniversary, and Mr. Okereki is going to read the spotlight.
All right, tonight, the Gadding Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge and celebrate its 60th anniversary of Farmers and Merchant Bank of Gadding Grove. Would Vice President Sandy Thomas please come forward tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
In 1954, a group of local businessmen sought to start a bank in Gadding Grove that they could call their own. After a series of meetings, they petitioned the Farmers and Merchant Bank in Long Beach to build a bank branch here in Gadding Grove. Their request was answered, and a $500,000 office was built on the corner of Gadding Grove Boulevard and Bone Street, where the bank stands today. Twenty local residents were hired to manage the new facility, which opened for business on October 15, 1955. When it opened, the new facility was state-of-the-art in every way. Its most distinctive feature, a 350-ton vault made of steel reinforced concrete, was further secured by an imposing 20-ton door fabricated from solid steel. The office also showcased driving windows, air conditioning, and piping music. The Gadding Grove office was the first established Farmers and Merchant Bank facility in Orange County, and the first one located outside of Long Beach. To reflect this expansion, Farmers and Merchant Bank changed its name to Farmers and Merchants Bank of Southern Counties. Farmers and Merchant Bank of Gadding Grove is a strong supporter of the Gadding Grove Communities Foundation annual golf tournament, one of the largest fundraisers of the year, which benefits both the Foundation and the Gadding Grove Chamber of Commerce. For over 20 years, Farmers and Merchant Bank have also been supporting the Miss Gadding Grove Pageant and Scholarship Organization by sponsoring a contestant. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Vice President Sandy Thomas with a proclamation honoring the 60th anniversary of Farmers and Merchant Bank of Gadding Grove. The city would like to thank Farmers and Merchant Bank for their longevity and sound business standing in the Gadding Grove community. Congratulations. Make his speech.
Wanna say a few words?
Say something?
Well, thank you so much, council. This is really a great honor, especially for being involved with the Gadding Grove community for so many years. I'm actually in my 40th year with Farmers and Merchants here in Gadding Grove. I say I started when I was 12. So, I love this community, I love what it stands for, and Farmers and Merchants always gives back, over $2 million every year to the communities in which we serve, and we're very proud to be a part of Gadding Grove. Thank you.
All right, now, we're going to convene a successor agency and a sanitary district with the city council meeting. We have oral communications. Mr. Rod Powell, following him will be R. Allen Bayless, and then Jay Bieber.
My name's Rod Powell, and I have not been here at this location, and it's very nice. I like it better. I got a little bit of a stomach ache, but I still wanna go over about five or six things real quickly. First one is the Galleria. I would like to know if any of you could please let me know what's going on with that. It's my opinion is you should just tear it down, unless there's something that's already in, like, really in motion, which I don't know. I haven't heard anything from you guys, so I don't know that. Second would be districts. I wish that you guys had made the decision to do something about that before it cost our city $200, what, almost $300,000, to end up with the same thing that you knew was gonna happen. I consider that to be incompetence. Barlag and Broadwater, I'd like to know what's going on. From what I understand, Broadwater's, Jeremy Broadwater's taken a stress leave or whatever. You know, look what we've gotten since that happened. The reason that we have a new mayor to begin with is because of that. You know that. And yet, have you done anything about it? Barlag is getting a quarter million dollars this year. What are we getting for that? Anything? I would like to know. I'd like someone, maybe from the city manager, who is, I think his boss, to tell me that we're getting something for our money. I think we deserve that. What are we getting for Jeremy Broadwater making over $100,000? You know, he said it, he's done, he hasn't been a fireman. We hire 10 firemen out of 500. We only got nine. We didn't get 10. I'm gonna make it brief. The last thing is on pot shops. I'm really unhappy that there's a pot shop. Every single time I come out of my neighborhood, it's right next door to houses, you know. Everyone, well, not everyone, I think, my opinion is these are criminal operations in the sense that they're banned, and they're, you know, the federal government says it's illegal. They're, and everyone knows that the ones backing these places are probably criminal organizations, and they're right next door to houses. I'm lucky I don't live right next door to them. And yet, we can't, there's 25 of them about now in our city after we banned them. You don't consider that a slap to the city council that banned them? They're all back. Are we doing, doing anything about it? I have to know this from the mayor, you know, because from what I understand, you guys pushed the, pushed the city attorney off of this. We could be doing court injunctions and really solve the problem. We could've solved it already. But you don't seem to want that, and I have to know since our mayor has made it clear at a recent debate where you're trying to seek higher office, and the debate question had to do with something about pot and legalizing marijuana, and I believe from what the article in the Voice of OC said, you are in favor of the legalization of marijuana. Is that something that's impacting this medical marijuana decisions? I would like to know that, if that's the case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will address your concerns following this. R. Allen Bayless.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Allen Bayless. I'm an attorney. I do traffic ticket defense, and I handle a lot of Gadding Grove photo tickets. And I believe that the police department's going to talk tonight about how this is a safety issue. It's safety, and nothing but safety, or anything else, nothing but safety. However, I have some documents here that I'd like to distribute to the city council, if I may. Can I just add 'em up? These are what they call Scene A shots. These show the vehicle prior to entering the intersection on a red light. If you look at the data bar on the top of the photograph, you'll find that the, the light had been red, or I'm sorry, I'll start with the beginning. Speed limit is 45, the vehicle's traveling at 43, and the light had been red for 0.17 seconds, 17 hundredths of a second. Now, I was in court on this case today, and if this is about safety and not revenue collection and just brutalizing the public over extremely minor, you know, violations, then, you know, let's negotiate these things. Today, I was told that we will not negotiate on these tickets. We either dismiss them or we move forward. I'm sure that Mr. Councilmember Fan would have a real hard time doing his job as a district attorney if he had to go to trial on every single case that crossed his desk. You need to be able to negotiate these things so that the punishment is reasonable, given the nature of the violation. Seventeen hundredths of a second is merely the blink of an eye. Is that worth a $500 fine and a point on a person's driving record? I think not. If it's about safety, then deal with it as a safety issue. But I strongly believe that, you know, this, you know, it's all about safety. It's not borne out in the courtroom. I can tell you that for sure. And so, I think that the system is flawed, the, there are issues with legal aspects of these cases. I have not focused my attention on taking cases to trial and, and doing appeals on, in on Gadding Grove cases. I've been focusing my attention on, on Santa Ana. I beat them into submission. They shut down their program in June. So, you know, I have no one else left to focus my attention on other than Gadding Grove and Los Alamitos. So, you know, let's look at the cost, look at the benefit. The report submitted by the, by the police department doesn't address the issue, and there's no control. They did not look at intersections that, that did not have cameras. So, there's nothing to compare it to. It's completely invalid. Thank you very much, and I urge the council to vote to end the red light camera program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay Bieber. And then Leland Sisk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Nice to see you all again. I'm here tonight primarily to speak on the red light camera program and answer any questions that anyone has regarding the report that I presented to council, the second report on this issue. I want to highlight a couple of things in that report, and Mr. Bayless mentioned, mentioned one of them, which is that the report back from the police department was, and it says within the report, which is kind of confusing, that they recognized that the important question was, if you have less red light running collisions, but you have more rear-end collisions, how does that affect whether that trade-off is appropriate? Their report doesn't even address that question at all. All they looked at is whether or not the, whether or not the red light running collisions, whether there were more, whether there's a greater severity before the cameras and less of a severity afterwards. But that doesn't answer the question that was asked, and plus, if you have a, if you have a decade or more of traffic collision, you're going to expect to see collision severity in one particular category go down. The reason is because the, because cars are getting safer, and so you would expect that to happen naturally. And so, it doesn't, it doesn't answer the question. Now, we took a look at this question, and we studied collisions as far as red light running collisions, whether they went up or down. We looked at whether the rear-end collisions went up or down, and we calculated that index. And with our new study, we found that in locations where the red light cameras, when there, where there was a reduction in the number of red light running collisions, we've, and there was an increase in the number of rear-end collisions, we found that the severity of collisions overall increased by almost a double. It was a 95% increase. And so, the question is, if the city is moving forward with a program that, where, even if you believe that the red light cameras were the cause of this reduction in, in collisions, which is really not clear, because statistical analysis shows that it is not statistically a significant difference, but even if you believe that was the case, you're trading that off for collisions or more collisions, and more people are getting hurt. So, the benefit of the system is not borne out. And so, that's an important aspect of it. The other aspect is that the, that the program is, has shown that when you increase the yellow light time, when you look at what's necessary in terms of the engineering, the city has reduced violations at locations since January, overall about 60-some-odd percent. At certain locations, it was over about 95%. And this is only by adjusting yellow light time by a half a second. So, what that tells you is that the city can achieve as much or greater benefit in terms of safety, but just doing the engineering properly. If you look at the charts that, that I have in my report, what you'll see is that the, that at certain locations, the number of red light running violations are down to like 5, 2, 8. I mean, if you have that happening at some intersections, but at other intersections you have 50, 100, what does that tell you? It's the same population of drivers. So, what that tells you is there's something different about this other intersection. Most likely, the engineering could have to do with the yellow light timing, although the yellow light timing may be in compliance. There are other engineering factors, and I'll give you an example. At Harbor and Trask, drivers are coming south on Harbor, and they have to go underneath a, an overpass for the highway in order to get to the intersection. Their view of the intersection and the signals is blocked for some period of time, and also they're emerging from a dark area into a light area. So, what's likely happening there is that the, they're not seeing the yellow light change immediately when it changes, and they don't have enough time to react. Even though the city is, has increased yellow light time, it may need to do so even more. So, there's a number of factors involved. With this reduction in the red light running that you've seen, the staff report says that the program has, is covering its cost. Starting in this new fiscal year, it definitely will not. The city is on track to lose about $370,000 overall. Thank you. And I know there was a question of whether police officer salaries are paid by this program or can use the money for other things, and the fact of the matter is that no matter what you do in terms of this program, those salaries will no longer be covered by this program. So, it's going to have to be paid out of the city budget and the general fund no matter what. I'm here to answer any questions on the specificity of the report or any of those sort of things, the differences in methodology, and why their numbers might be a little different than our numbers. Certainly, different people can debate on the methodology of it. We feel ours is more robust, and we're happy to support that. So, thank you very much, and I'm here to answer any questions when that issue comes up.
Thank you. Following Leland Sisk will be Tony Flores, and then Douglas Hughes.
Leland Sisk. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to address one topic and one topic only, and that has to do with UAVs, unmanned aerial vehicles, more commonly known as drones. In the past six or seven months, one of my neighbors on an adjoining street has seen fit to fly the, a drone in the morning. They fly it in the daytime. They fly it at nighttime. They hover up and down the street. They come over houses. This thing goes across my, the top of my house, clears my second story by maybe 10 feet. I've seen it up as high as 300 or 400 feet. I have no idea what they're looking at. I don't know the strength of the camera on this vehicle, but I found out last night from the Gadding Grove Police Department, there's nothing they can do about it because there's no city ordinance. I did learn today that the state of Tennessee and Texas and Florida made it illegal to film high school football games so that the opposing coaches could steal the signal. But I'm more concerned with safety. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. These things have become hazards at airports. So, just think about this. There could be a drone out there flying around somewhere right now that could be monitoring your house, 'cause the city doesn't have an ordinance. You don't know what they're looking at, don't know anything about them. So, what I'm proposing is that because the city of Gadding Grove has ample parks, County of Orange has plenty of open spaces, just make it a civil penalty for flying a drone in a populated area. I don't want them flying over my house. Do you want them over your house? I don't. So, I'm asking that the city council address this problem, pass some sort of city ordinance making it illegal to fly these drones in populated residential neighborhoods. I would hate to think of the thought of one of these drones crashing into a school or a window like this, or dropping from 300 or 400 feet up onto a police or other emergency vehicle. There's just no point in it. I mean, if you really need to see your neighbor's backyard, go to Google Earth. I'm sure they got a picture of it. I thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Tony Flores, and then Michael Dishler.
Good evening, mayor's staff. I'm Tony Flores. I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments that I had heard after I had left the last city council meeting, Mr. Fan, regarding that article in the OC Register. Now, you misquoted me. You're saying that I said you're racist. I didn't say that. You needed to listen to what I was saying. I said, "People called me and says it appeared to be racist." And I called you, and I think we clarified that. And I said, "I don't believe you're racist." But you went ahead and said that, and I have a problem with that. Now, however, since we're talking about race, on the Gadding Grove bio, on the website, you've been in Gadding Grove for four years. Now, I appreciate the fact that you walked every corner of Gadding Grove, but I've walked into a number of Chinese restaurants. That doesn't make me Chairman Mao, okay? So, here's what I'm saying, is that the reason you've come to Gadding Grove, from what I could see, is that with your last name, you're gonna get elected, and then you're able to go, maybe to run for, say, Orange County Supervisor, which is what you've done. But in that same breath, last week, you said you're against districts, but you ran for a district seat, Orange County Supervisor. So, I don't understand how you can talk out of both sides of your political mouth there, 'cause it doesn't make sense. And if you're saying that you ran for Orange County Supervisor because you believe that an Orange County Supervisor can still oversee the entire Orange County, then you've blown your argument for why you're against districts in Gadding Grove. I think you need to get that straightened out. Regarding my recent request for the public records regarding the alleged incident over at the Hyatt with Mayor Nguyen and the Hyatt, I did receive a letter or a denial from the city, and I'll read it in short. This information is exempt per Government Code 6254-F. What's interesting is in the same part of the Government Code 6253, it talks about if it's gonna be denied, the agency shall set forth the names and titles and positions of each person responsible for the denial. It also says that the agencies shall justify the withholding of the record by demonstrating, by demonstrating why it's exempt, or that the facts of the particular case, the public interest served by not disclosing the record clearly outweighs the public interest served by disclosure of the record. I didn't receive either one of those, and I've sent you folks emails on that, so hopefully you've read them by now, 'cause almost two weeks ago that I sent that. Also, in 6450, 6254-F, it also says that these are discoverable and you can release it provided that we're, to the victims. And in this case, what I was saying is that if Mayor Nguyen, if, if Mayor Nguyen was having a problem that actually caused the police to show up, then we're entitled to that. And there's a case that I sent you folks that's on point on that regarding the conduct of our government. In this case, Mr. Nguyen is part of our government, and I believe we're entitled to it. So, I'm not quite sure why I haven't received that information. I've got the denial, but not pursuant to the Government Code. So, you're deficient in the denial. You need to answer why. You need to demonstrate why it's not a public record. I just said it's exempt. You need to demonstrate why. Regarding the, the light cameras here, I must confess, I've done no research on the, on the light cameras, but I will say this. I have every confidence in Chief Algen and his staff. Everybody in the Gadding Grove Police Department has my confidence. They, they work here, some of them even live here. They're not out-of-town attorneys looking for a buck or trying to pump up their career, whatever it is they're doing. But I would strongly urge that we stand by the Gadding Grove Police Department, because if they're giving the information under Chief Algen, I think it's gonna be solid. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Michael Dishler will be David Barros, and then Robert Marcario.
Good evening, council members. That's a hard act to follow. What I want to talk about tonight is specifically about code enforcement and exactly what they do and what they don't do. In my neighborhood at Magnolia and Chapman, behind Stater Brothers, and also at Dale and Chapman, those neighborhoods there, I counted about 16 different houses that have broken old TVs on the sidewalk for weeks and weeks. Even on my street, there's like three houses, and they just pile up this junk, and I wonder, when I have a flat tire on my driveway, I get a notice in the mail right away that you have a half-flat tire, and you better fix it or we're gonna take your car, we're gonna tow it out of your driveway. These kind of threats are the things that I, I get in the letter. If you don't do this, we're gonna do that, and if you don't fill up that tire, we have the right to take your car, even though maybe they don't do it. But the point is, is these code enforcement people, they come right down my street, 'cause my street is pretty long and goes right out to Chapman. So, I see them drive by. I wonder why they don't do what they do about flat tires, send a notice and make these people remove these TVs. There's 15 of them, 15 different. They're just making our neighborhood look like trash. And I, I appreciate the feedback I get from the council members. I really think it's great. It makes me feel good when people respond to what I say, because I, I feel like I'm not just rambling. These are everyday issues that I have to deal with in my neighborhood. There's this plague... There's this plague of graffiti on the curbs and the streets. I don't know, some of it is, I think, from public works, but I'm not sure. Like they mark with a spray can on the, on the street about maybe the manhole covers or the gas pipelines and, um, we have these issues and then we have the neighbors, or I don't even know who's doing it, but this is constant graffiti on other people's property. It gets removed, but the next day it's back there again. So, um, I appreciate that they remove it quickly. This is my neighborhood and I feel like it's, it's, uh, it's a real issue. I don't know if, if people are being caught or arrested or fined or anything. Whose children are doing it? I don't even know who's doing it, but I just know it's everyday thing. Um, and one more quick statement about this, these pot shops. Uh, there was one on Brookhurst Way and Stamford, and I noticed it there. Um, I'm not against pot shops, but I am against them being in neighborhoods at the end of the street. And the real thing that I have a problem with is that people gather behind these pot shops and they hang out there at night and it doesn't look good. And I feel sorry for the people that live on Stamford and Brookhurst Way because it, it's, uh, you know, it, it doesn't look good for the neighborhood. I'm not against the marijuana pot shops. They just need to be put in other places away from neighborhoods, I think. Thank you.
Okay. Following David Barros, Robert Marcario, and then Michael Hurst.
My name's David Barros and, uh, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council. I appreciate and want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to bring my concerns. My property's back fence borders Garden Grove Park. There have been people going there every single day. I've started kind of obviously at my own expense and my own time, uh, driving around the park. The first time I went there, I talked to everybody I saw in the park, trying to figure out who the people are that are feeding these cats. Now, you might think, what is this guy talking about? I mean, that's the, based on all the other items that come before you, I'm sure this is, uh, you, you have bigger fish to fry, but in my case, no, this is a big fish because, and I'll tell you why. These cats decide to come into my yard, my neighbor's yard, and defecate. I mean, it is so bad that my gardener doesn't even want to mow my back lawn anymore. I can't have my grandkids, if they come over, they can't go in the backyard and play. There's no way. Not only that, but how would you like to be in the family room and it's warm outside and you open the back door and you're watching TV or whatever and you're smelling the, uh, uh, bag, uh, cat feces all the while in the air as a breeze wafts my way. So I, uh, I've been at the park and I've taken pictures. If you want to see the photos, I have them here. I have, uh, talked to the people that bring this food. I mean, you won't believe this, this food is so fantastic, I want to eat it. I don't even eat that well. It's amazing. The other thing too, that I would like to bring up are the people that are camping out right there. About 1:00, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, not every night, but you will hear fights going on, screaming and yelling and, and loud music. Matter of fact, during the, uh, the, the, the heat, uh, uh, the, the heat spell we just had, there was a motorhome sitting right behind my, my, uh, house with the generator going all day and all night. I mean, that park was not designed for camping. There are no camp, uh, no motorhome parking spots. There's no, uh, pump out stations. There's none of that. And then these unsavory characters are just camping out on the lawn underneath a tree, which brings up another subject. I don't know if you realize this or not, and I can't really prove it because it was just told to me, that easement between the wall and the curb on Atlantis, actually underneath that grass is a concrete flood control channel. And why is my question, in God's name, did anybody decide to plant these huge ficus nittida trees on top of a flood control channel? What do you think is going to happen? They're really, really getting really, really big already. And maybe most of you weren't around here then, but I was. It cost the city $36 million to remove ficus nittida plants from the parkways because they were tearing up the streets, tearing up the curbs, going in underneath people's, uh, slabs, breaking up the slabs underneath the houses. And it cost the, the city a, a whole bunch of money. And then they turn around and plant them again. If you're going to plant a ficus nittida, it's got to have lots of room because it's going to get huge. The other thing I, uh, while I was, uh, cruising around, a policeman happened by and I asked him a favor. I said, hey, and I kind of told him the problem. When you're patrolling along Westminster, you don't have an emergency to go to. You're just cruising. Do me a favor and just detour through the park. And, um, he happened to be doing it at that time, obviously. And, uh, he says, hey, you got to call, uh, call the police department and tell them and if the, if the dispatcher tells us to do it, we'll do it. Just for trivia information, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Marcario.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. Quickly, I just want to thank the council for the Open Streets event. It was a success as usual. It was a fabulous event. It was a little bit hot that day. Thankfully, it was day and night because it cooled off at night. It was wonderful. The lampshades that were sponsored by the Garden Grove Community Foundation and done by Andrew Haberstadt and what's the other Andrew? Councillor. Councillor were fabulous and the community was all involved and we all enjoyed making those and it was just great. So everybody should drive down Main Street because they'll still be up until the beginning of November. And also the Black Umbrella Art Gallery and Tattoo Shop, they were an integral part to that and we're, we're thrilled that they're on Main Street. I also wanted to, um, say that I am in favor of districts. I think having five districts, you will have accountable members, you will know that they live in your city. It will be much less expensive to run a campaign. You'll be able to walk that campaign and you will know and be more responsive. And I think that a rotating mayor is just fine. Other cities like Huntington Beach have that and I think it will serve our city well. I support the Mills Act that is on the, um, agency agenda, preserving our last few, uh, historical buildings, homes. Uh, it's very important to maintain the character of our neighborhood. And, um, I wanted to thank the city for sponsoring the Bike Mosaic that was done, um, at the Open Streets. It will be completed. It's currently at the Black Umbrella. I will ground it sometime this week and I know that I'll be working with you and city staff to find its permanent location and I look forward to that. Thank you very much. Now, as your mosquito and vector control appointee, I wanted to give you a bit of an update. We had an extremely long season. We're still in that season. It started early this year because of the heat and it has continued. The summer rains have made it exceedingly difficult, wonderful for the mosquitoes, but terrible for controlling them. So I want to, um, tell you the, the numbers for West Nile virus for this season thus far have been 60 people have been affected with it. We have had two fatalities. Now, that is an improvement to last year, but there is still, uh, we all need to be very coherent and very diligent. It's a community, a shared effort in controlling mosquitoes. You need to be very cautious during the early morning and late evenings, wear long sleeves and long slacks. You'll also want to repair your screens on your windows and doors to keep them out of your home. You want to clean up and dump and drain any water source that is just sitting there turning green and, and providing a breeding site for mosquitoes. So any pots, any pans, any buckets, any of those little saucers underneath your potted plants, dump it. Get rid of any standing water. If you have sprinkler heads that are leaking, fix them. You also want to wear insect repellent in those, that timeframe. I know there will be a lot of trick or treaters out for the Halloween coming up. Put a little mosquito repellent on those kids before you take them out there. You do not want them getting that West Nile virus. West Nile virus is a very serious disease. It can cause paralysis. It can cause meningitis. It can cause lifelong lasting ill effects to anyone that is, that is, gets West Nile virus. So please be careful out there, wear that insect repellent and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Michael Hurst and then Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, residents of Garden Grove. I'm, uh, I'm bringing some bad news to you guys. Last Friday, we found a population of the yellow fever mosquito in Garden Grove. Uh, it's been there for a while. It's, um, a very serious issue because this is a different type of mosquito. It's a day biter. It prefers mammals, whereas the West Nile virus mosquitoes were bird feeders and occasionally bit people. This one will track people down and attack them. It's an ankle biter. It's a low flyer. If you get bitten on your ankles during the day, call us and let us know what's going on because that's the only way we're going to find this mosquito. It's not a matter of flushing out pots and dumping them out. It's getting a lot more serious than that because this mosquito lays eggs individually and adheres them to a surface. So you flush that saucer out and you flush whatever was hatched in there, but you still have the eggs that will hatch again the next time it fills up with water. And not all of the eggs, just some of them. So this mosquito is very difficult to get rid of. Uh, the eggs can persist, stuck to a surface for as much as seven years. So anything that you dump, better leave dumps for seven years. It not only transmits dengue, chikungunya and yellow fever, but it, um, is an extremely competent vector for dog heartworm. So that's a disease that we haven't really had to deal with too much here until, until now it's going to start to cause a problem. I can't stress the difficulty in getting rid of it. We're not sure that, um, when we were helping greater LA with their infestation, we would have to check our vehicles to make sure that there were no mosquitoes hitchhiking and ride back to Orange County. So it's, it's a game changer. Um, if you get bitten during the day, and that's the best tip off, call us at, at area code 714-971-2421 and report it. Um, I think what's happened is we had a issue in Mission Viejo and it got some publicity and people said, well, I'd get bit during the day too. So I'll call back to control. And we now have five cities in the county that have established populations. We were hoping that people would be less tolerant. Call earlier. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Josh, Josh McIntosh, Mary Uresima.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff and the city of Garden Grove. First off, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilmember Fawn for allowing Agenda Item 19A to come to light tonight. Something I've been requesting for five years and it's, my time has come. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the city staff for reproducing what had been a 1986 report that was hand typed and not necessarily available to the public before. We now have a comprehensive historic and architectural resources inventory available on the city website and to me that is gold because this has been the holy grail for me in local history. On the cover of this report, which is available on the back of the room, there may be some copies left, um, you'll see that I've written that I am requesting that the city of Garden Grove adopt the Mills Act on a voluntary basis in which property owners have the option of registering with the National Register of Historic Places and if accepted, will be eligible for Mills Act benefits and protection. I'd like to ask the city of Garden Grove to bypass the expensive need for a consultant as each property owner would be responsible for applying with the NRHP on their own. The city would not need to spend the, the anticipated $50,000 to $100,000, as stated in the staff report, if individuals are responsible for qualifying their properties rather than another citywide report as done in 1986. Each year, we lose more and more historic properties and if we don't take steps now, we will have nothing left to save. With that, I'm going to add a little personal testimony. Some of you may have heard me over the past five years saying this, but you're going to hear it again. There's no way I've got enough time in five minutes to, uh, get this all out, so I will be available afterwards for questions, should this come up during the discussion on 19A. In the summer of 2009, I purchased an 1888 Eastlake-style Victorian home from my cousin, Melanie Miller. The home had been in our family since 1943, when Catherine Rayburn passed away and my great, great uncle, Oscar Miller, and his wife Pearl McIntosh Miller purchased the home. My family had already lived very close to the home for 20 years and it was their dream, much like my own, to what was widely considered the most, to live in what was considered the most beautiful home in Garden Grove by many. The Rayburns, as in Mr. and Mrs. George Rayburn, whom Garden Grove has named a street after, purchased the home from Percy Walling. Mr. Rayburn was an influential community activist and he purchased that home with, for one gold coin. I have the deed that shows this. The home was designed and built by Percy Walling and is property extended from what is now St. Culliman's Church to the Home Depot. Our block is named the Rayburn tract. The home was featured in an 1893 pamphlet that was sent out to the Midwest and the East Coast to entice people to move to rural California, specifically Garden Grove. It was an influential property that helped to start the Garden Grove first housing boom, even before our city had plumbing, electricity, gas, automobiles, or even the train. Our home was one of the Garden Grove Pride Home of the Year winners twice in the 1980s, when my Aunt Evelyn was able to spend her retirement gardening and refurbishing it as much as she wanted. I look forward to having that opportunity myself. However, nothing is for certain. No one knows when it'll be their time to go. I have no children of my own to pass on the home to. This is something that has always troubled me. Our city does not currently have any kind of preservation policy in place. Each year, we see more and more of our historical properties bulldozed in order to create another apartment complex or townhome community. I'm asking this council to consider adopting the Mills Act, a California state program that prohibits future property owners from destroying a registered historical landmark or making renovations that would take away from its original appearance. In 1986, we had 152 properties that qualified as having historical significance. Today, that, that number is much smaller. Please, I'm asking you to consider this on a case-by-case basis and allow members of the community to have their home registered. There's no reason to do an expensive report. We've already got the report. It's not changed. We haven't added any new historic homes. We've only lost them. I'd like to set up a committee that would, uh, continue researching this and helping residents to qualify their homes and register with the National Historic Society and, uh, keep the pride of what we had in Garden Grove before it's all gone and thank you.
Thank you. Mary Uresima and then Alan Christian.
Good evening, Mayor Nguyen and members of the city council. I'm Mary Uresima and I'm visiting you tonight from Huntington Beach. I chair the effort to save historic Wintersburg in Huntington Beach and, uh, we've been in the news, if you've been reading the Los Angeles Times, Orange County Register, and it's picking up across the country. On Thursday last week- On Thursday last week, the National Trust for Historic Preservation in Washington DC named historic Wintersburg a national treasure. It is one of a handful across the country. It is Orange County's first national treasure and it represents the Japanese pioneers who came to California in the 1880s. It is a pioneer goldfish farm and mission site. And there is a connection to Garden Grove. In the early 1990s, and I would say before any of you were on the city council, the city of Garden Grove demolished the Japanese Language School on Sherman Way. That's where Costco is today. The Japanese Language School was supported by the Wintersburg Mission in what is now Huntington Beach. It was one of four Japanese language schools in Orange County, of which there is only one building left, and that building is in Crystal Cove State Park, which is also on the National Register of Historic Places. So in that one structure, Garden Grove lost a historic building that has a connection today with the National Register site in Crystal Cove State Park and now a national treasure site in Huntington Beach. The story of the Japanese pioneers who helped settle the American West has been recognized now as significant and rare history, also American history. And I'm here to talk to you about supporting your, you know, adopting the Mills Act here in Garden Grove and also looking at what you might do to establish a historic preservation ordinance, a citywide ordinance, to organize how you look at historic structures, your historic inventory, not only for what you have left, but also as leaders for what you want to leave for your grandchildren and their children. In the not-too-distant future, there will be structures that will reach that 50-year mark that represent the arrival of the Vietnamese in America. Another American story. Another story of people who survived, who persevered, and who triumphed. Look at your city council today. That's an American story you want to save for future generations. Just as the Japanese pioneers 100 years ago, those descendants today don't have a tangible place to go and find out how these pioneers established their life, what they went through to become Americans. There are civil liberties stories related to historic Wintersburg that are important. And the history that's contained here in Garden Grove, one of Orange County's oldest communities, represents those pioneers from, you know, of course, the mid-1800s, but also earlier than that, but also more recent history. If you're not aware, UCI has established an archive now for Southeast Asian history to capture the documents and the oral histories of the Vietnamese as they arrived in America because we're losing people every day. We're losing that history every day. And these historic structures you have that signify these different moments in American history represent that. And it is something that generates economic development, if you've never looked at historic preservation that way, because people hire local craftsmen to restore their buildings. They hire architects. They hire craftsmen to, you know, refinish things, but also heritage tourism. I mean, look at your little Main Street. I come and shop on your Main Street from Huntington Beach because it has that unique quality. Other people come here from other places to gravitate to that. And think about the places that you travel. If you go to Monterey or Santa Barbara, some of those, Pasadena, you go to see the history. You go to shop in a unique, authentic environment. So I would urge you to pass the Mills Act. I would urge you to look at a broader approach to historic preservation, look at historic preservation ordinance. And I know you've got people like Josh McIntosh who can help you get started, but you also have the National Trust with offices in Los Angeles who can also assist you. Thank you very much for your time. And Mayor Wynn, it's nice to see you face-to-face instead of on Twitter.
Thank you. Alan Christian and then Jim Listner. Following Jim Listner will be Charles Mitchell. Alan Christian, are you here? Is that you coming forward? Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alan Christian and I have been a resident of Garden Grove since 1954. I spent five years in the Navy and eleven and a half with the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. I am here as an advocate for law enforcement and in particular, traffic and photo enforcement. I do believe that if people obeyed the traffic laws, they wouldn't have a need for photo enforcement. And I'm sure that the council members and the people that in the engineering department have enough knowledge to do the right thing for the citizen to keep them safe. And I thank you for the work that you people are doing here now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Listner.
My name's Jim Listner. The gentleman who spoke just now and Mr. Flores who spoke earlier asked you to basically haven't done any research, Mr. Flores said so, he hadn't done any research, but they asked you to approve red light cameras based upon their faith and reliance on the police department in general. Well, I've done research and I want to talk about it. I looked at the staff report that's presented to you tonight and it has a lot of statistics in it about the intersections that you have with red light cameras, but it doesn't have a control group to compare to, to see, you know, did some other randomly chosen intersections in the area also have lower accidents over the years just because people are driving better, automotive equipment is better, things like that. I mean, this is a public health matter because it involves people's lives. And if this was a, let's say this was a study of a new drug, and they would gather a bunch of people who were eligible for that drug, randomly divide them into two groups, give the drug to one half and compare them to the other half. That's kind of simplifying. But at least that way, they'd have a control group. They'd have a group that they gave the drug to and a similar group that they didn't give the drug to and they could see whether the drug made a difference because they could compare the two groups. Well, you don't have that here. And, you know, a professional statistician would have told you that and would have required that there be a control group. And you could still set up a control group and you could put, basically take two hats, put the names of all the north-south streets in this region in one hat and all the east-west streets in the other hat and pick one from each hat and that would be an intersection and those could be your control group. So I'm suggesting that if you really, you know, want something that you can rely on on this important public health matter, that you get yourself a control group. I also wanted to repeat something that Jay Bieber wrote in the report that he did for your meeting back in August. He commented about the large number of right turn tickets at Harbor and Trask, about 10,000 of them, and pointed out that, you know, when they looked at it in LA, there were, let's see, he said that the chances that a rolling right turn might result in a collision was one in 345,000. That was in LA. And he also said that there was no evidence that those had ever resulted in a collision here in Garden Grove. So, you know, I think, you know, since Harbor, in August, this last August, Harbor and Trask tickets amounted to 169 out of the total of 293 tickets issued by the city, red light camera tickets issued by the city that month. So they're the majority of the tickets and you ought to ask your staff to report on you, to you as to, you know, how that heavy ticketing is justified when there have been no accidents. I also would like to repeat my request that I made a couple of letters ago to you, that you have a look at the percentage of visitors getting these tickets versus local people because the visitors, of course, don't know that the cameras are there and so are not going to have, not be much affected by the presence of the cameras except to get a ticket. But it won't stop them from making the violation. The cameras won't. Also, the age of drivers, again, because if you have a preponderance of older drivers getting tickets at a particular intersection, that's your signal to fix the intersection. In other words, the intersection is too complicated. It maybe has too much signage or too little signage, whatever it takes, but that's your signal. And the last one is to ask your staff to tell you how they are processing tickets going to people with confidential registrations. That's the 5% or 6% of all drivers in California who have license plates that can't be looked up by the red light camera company. The police have to look them up manually themselves and many departments are not doing that, so they're getting a free ride and you should ask if your department is doing that. Thank you very much.
Charles Mitchell. And then James Dean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. In a little over two weeks, we will be celebrating, commemorating Veterans Day. I say celebrating because we will celebrate our heroes that have done everything they could to preserve our freedoms and commemorating those we have lost in the struggle for our I have a friend who publishes small books and he recently sent me a copy of his latest It's entitled "The Taking of Saipan." Now, there's a lot of names that unless you're a history buff, really don't mean anything to most people. Saipan, Tennyson, and Tarawa come to mind. Now, this book is about one of the Marines who participated in those campaigns. His name was Dick Walters. And ironically, he was able to keep something that he found on Saipan. It was a diary of a Japanese soldier. And this friend of mine who publishes these books interviewed this veteran and he got someone to translate this diary of a Japanese soldier. And he put together a book that tells the story of the Battle of Saipan from both sides. Now, I mention Tarawa because this Marine was also one of the ones who because of the reef that prevented their landing craft from getting to the beach, had to wait 1,000 yards, waist-high in the water against enemy fire to get to shore. Unfortunately, he passed away about a week and a half ago. And I would like, if you would, Mr. Mayor, to close this meeting in honor of Dick Walters. Now, as I said, a little over two weeks from now, we will be talking about Veterans Day. A lot of us will be participating in programs to honor our veterans, many of whom are still living, but the majority of them have passed on. But we have a lot of veterans that are still serving today and they're coming home from their service and they're finding a great deal of difficulty settling down and establishing their homes. Now, there's an organization called AMVETS. What this organization does, it gathers clothing, furniture, household goods, appliances, and provides these to returning veterans and their families so that they can establish their homes. On November 12th, the day after Veterans Day, AMVETS on Euclid Street between Chapman and Lamson is going to have a ribbon cutting at 2:00 in the afternoon sponsored by the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. And I hope that as many of you as possible will try to be there for this to honor our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. James Dean and then Stephen Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is James Dean. I'm a resident here in Garden Grove. I'm the Grand Knight of the Knights of Columbus for Garden Grove's Council 4581. I'm also a parishioner up the street here on Stanford at St. Columbas Catholic Church. I've spoken to you a few times regarding the red light camera project and what my interest was in it. I am pleading to council and the mayor to end the red light camera project because from my personal opinion, it is no good for our city. Out of all the cities that have had red light camera projects in effect, more than half of them have closed them down because they've come to the same conclusions. Again, a red light camera ticket costs you $490 and for a lot of the citizens here in Garden Grove, they cannot afford this. With that said, they have to go to traffic school and pay for traffic school on top of it and they only have 30 days to make the payment. If they cannot make the payment within a 30-day period through the courts, then they get penalized another $325 civil assessment on top of the $490, which for a lot of our citizens here is not doable. Some of the citizens will ask for a payment plan, which is relatively a fair issue, but if they miss one payment, whether it's a $35 payment or a $100 payment, there's a civil assessment attached to it again at $325. So, gentlemen, we need to do something about this issue. If you look around us and you go to these cameras where they're positioned, Red Flex, the company that installed these cameras, is not a stupid company. They know exactly what to do to get the best revenue out of each light. Now, I could understand someone blowing through an intersection at 65 miles an hour receiving a brutal ticket and, you know, the option to go to traffic school, but when you have cameras focused on a right-hand turn or people in our community here in which the majority of our citizens are Vietnamese on this side of town, they'll come up to the intersection, they'll slow down, they'll see that it's clear, do in the speed limit or less than the speed limit and proceed with their turn. Picture is taken, they get a ticket in the mail for $490. And I've spoke once before about that. I've given you proof that less than 1% of all accidents in the U.S. are caused from right-hand turns and that's where the majority of the tickets are focused on. Red Flex is a dirty company. We all know that. They've been in hot water several times. Why Garden Grove would want to deal with a company that's been down that road? I haven't a clue. So again, gentlemen, I live in my town. I'm the Grand Knight for the Knights of Columbus, one of the largest fraternal organizations in the world with over 2 million members and over $2 billion in assets. I'm a trusted person in this society and it's my personal opinion and my opinion as a citizen that this project is ridiculous. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Stephen Hall. Ms. Palmeroy, would you please take that? There's a card out there.
Oh, this gentleman is Douglas Hughes. Do you have his card?
Okay.
Mayor, councilmen, and city people, I find it interesting that we've talked about keeping the historic properties intact because I'm here to talk tonight about Willowick Golf Course. And there's been information in the news, both in the newspaper and on TV, about the sale of Willowick Golf Course. Willowick has, it is the oldest 18-hole public golf course in Orange County. It has provided a lot of recreation to a lot of people. It has provided a lot of recreation to a lot of people for many decades. Personally, I learned to play golf on the golf course, and my father was the golf professional there from the mid-'50s through the early '60s. So I am attached to it personally. But on a less-than-personal level, on a more practical level, or a community level, the surrounding municipalities that might be interested in the purchase of this property to be converted into soccer fields and baseball fields will only use that property on the weekends. However, the golf course will be used throughout the week, and it will apply, it will supply a real, good opportunity for recreation to a lot of people of all ages, all throughout the week, not just on the weekends. It's also very reasonable to play golf there, which is something that is very important to a lot of us that are retired and are looking for a way to stretch our budgets when we're on fixed incomes. So I'd like for you to keep that in mind as well. The baby boomers are retiring right now, we're the leading edge of the baby boomers, and as more and more of the baby boomers retire, they're going to be looking for a place where they can stretch that money out, where they can have a good recreational experience for a little bit of money, and Willowick definitely provides that. And as far as I know, it's a profitable enterprise. So selling it to a municipality to be torn down and made into soccer fields and baseball fields that are only used primarily on the weekend makes no sense to me. Also, one of the bad things about doing that would be that it would provide places for the homeless, as well as criminal entities, to live, to carry on their business. On a environmental level, in order to fill those, make those fields, they would have to tear down a lot of the trees that line the fairways, and these are beautiful old trees, and they convert, they clean the air up around our neighborhoods, around our city. So I'd like for you to, respectfully, to keep that in mind as well. If you decide to sell this property, I think it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmeroy, is it?
Douglas Hughes.
Douglas Hughes?
Yeah.
Who was called earlier is now here?
He's right here.
Okay. All right.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmen, and staff, I thank you for letting us all speak. And they say sometimes the last is first. I would like to bring you up to date. There's a big need in Orange County, and especially here in Garden Grove, and that's for childcare. The main reason is the economy. The mother and the father have to work. So we have that need for the two-year-old, the three-year-old, and the four-year-old. When they hit five, they can go to public school. So they take care of the kid till they're two years old, then they want to put them in a childcare. Well, I'm on Brookhurst and Orangewood, you know my building. Up the street, there's a childcare on the other side, it's full, there's waiting list. I'm representing the Sisters of the Holy Cross. I owned the building on Orangewood and Brookhurst, and I sold it to them on the 19th of September. On the 22nd, they submitted these plans to get this childcare on a fast track, because they have, by the plan, they go by the square footage, they're allowed 35 children. They have a list, waiting list, way over 100 children. They have a school on Euclid, it's full, and it has a waiting list, and I could go on about the other organizations, but at the same time, there are no, you've got to know somebody to get your child in childcare. After they took the plans down to the city, submitted them, they were rejected. And I said, "Why?" They said, "Well, the fire marshal said the fire truck has got to go alongside of the garage." Now, that would be between the curb that holds the grass that's on the sidewalk on Orangewood. And then the garage was there, and the garage faces this way, and then you've got a driveway going back. He said, "That's too small, we've got to have a fire truck go back there." Who said? The fire marshal. And the lady over here is the one that will witness that, that's what Mara Parra told him. So, the architect engineer, he was beside himself, he says, "Well, I'll go down and talk to them." I said, "Can I go with you?" "No, no, you stay out of it." I said, "Okay, it's not my building anymore." So they negotiated the eight feet they wanted to cut the garage down to four feet. I said, "Can I go down?" "No, you stay out of it." I said, "Okay." Then they negotiated to get it just four feet. I couldn't stay out of it anymore. I just, you know, I know about fire trucks, I know about building, and I thought, "Well, maybe there was some reason why he's being turned down like this." So they said it was the fire chief, the fire marshal, so I got to talk to Captain Winn. His specialty is to prove property regardless of, to be commercial, that the trucks are there properly. So I took the plan over, showed it to him. He said, "There will never be a truck going between that building and the garage." I said, "What's going on?" He said, "I don't know, but the fire truck will be in the front parking lot or in the alley, and that's the only two places it'll be. It'll never go on the backside, that's where the children would be." So we got this back to Mara Parra, and she said, "Well, you have to go down to school permits, it's the other side of Garden Grove." And we tried to say, "Why?" "Oh, you've got to go there and get them to permit it." I'm scratching my head, I'm saying, "Why?" So we get there, Daniel, he's the man in charge, I don't remember the last name, he says, "Why are you here?" I said, "I know what you're saying. The square footage of the building equals how many children? It'll equal 35 children." He says, "Well, yeah." So he even wrote it on the plan, Jennifer asked him to, so we could take it back to Mara Parra. Take it back, and then she wants the eve cut off. Now, that's, for those that don't understand, the rain comes down, keeps the water about two feet away from the building. I said, "Why?" So I, Jennifer said, Mara said, "It's got to go to traffic." So I went to traffic, and I talked to Tony, he's got an Italian last name, so you know who he is. He says, "No, I told him what I would do," and he says, "You put up a sign that says, 'No trucks.'"
Sir, your time is up.
I'm asking you, if you will fast-track this through, let the Sisters of the Loving Cross start building on it, they'll take the gamble, they want to get it done, and if you'll do that, we'll be grateful to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, you left something on the podium. Mr. Hughes? Sure. All right. So, you know, before we recess and have some cake for Chris, my colleague, Councilmember Chris Beer's birthday, I would like to address some of these comments, and we welcome all the comments. You know, you don't have to thank us, it is your right, you know, we're here in service to you. So, on the Galleria project, there really hasn't been much movement to, at least my satisfaction, and in my personal opinion, I would like my colleagues to join with me to go and pursue nuisance abatement, that's where I stand on that. You know, we have been very flexible, we have been very patient with all parties in a Galleria project, and I don't think that we have any more patience, at least for myself, on a Galleria project. With regard to the Barlag Broadwater issue, you know, what I have called for, the investigation from our state attorney general, that isn't happening, there is an ongoing DA investigation. I'm not sure where that is. I'd like to ask our city manager to check in on that. And with regards to these marijuana dispensaries popping up around the city, this is a serious issue. I would like to see stricter regulation. The reason why I am not for initiating litigation on marijuana dispensaries is not because I'm not concerned about the location of where they're at, I am concerned about that. And I think we should be ahead of the game and start looking at zoning and regulation, and how to control this in our city. That's the solution, because we've tried, and we haven't been successful. So just because we have an all-out ban, and we step in and we raid them, and we confiscate their marijuana and their dollars, doesn't mean they're not coming back. However, we also have to look at where this state is moving in the future. In 2016, there will likely be a ballot measure approved by voters in 2016. Let's get smart about this. Let's determine where these dispensaries can be, where they can operate, and the reality is, the state just passed, the state legislature just passed three bills signed by Governor Brown, saying that if we don't take action as municipalities, then we give up our ability to by March 2016. So I know that staff has been in these webinars and these conferences, and they're better understanding the issue. I would like to see strict regulations on that. You know, I will deliberate further on the red light camera issue and Redflex, but like I've said before, in the previous study, how there was no control, once again, there is no control. And we don't need to be statisticians to understand that. I'm pretty sure that grade-school kids understand what a control is in a scientific study. With regards to Mr. Hughes and what you brought up with the drones, I believe that the Federal Aviation Administration just recently released some guidelines. I'd like our city staff to look at those guidelines and see how we can implement them here in Garden Grove. And I'm going to refer our, what Mr. Flor has brought up in terms of demonstrating the reasons why we denied his request of public information, it's not something that I denied, it's something that staff did, and I do believe there should be a reason given, especially per code. Mr. Dishler, regarding code enforcement, I'm happy to say that we do have a new app available for all citizens with a smartphone. I encourage you to download it. It's a citizen-request app, you can find that on our website as well, and I do encourage you to do that. I think what you're doing here in terms of speaking up, letting us know about it, is really important. Definitely check in on that, on the workload of our code enforcement and where we are there in terms of our numbers of code enforcement. This is an issue that's been ongoing in our city. So definitely empathize with how you feel. You know, Mr. Barrows, I think that our city is currently not speaking enough in terms of what the county's responsibility is in terms of animal control, and we do need to make sure that we're holding the county board of supervisors accountable in terms of their jurisdiction and how much we pay into that. This is a animal control issue. I get it. We want to be kind to animals, but a lot of times, people who feed the cats, these stray cats, they don't understand that's actually causing a problem, not only for the neighbors in the area, because sometimes they're coming from somewhere else to feed the cats, they actually know where these cats live. And sadly, it's not a compassionate thing to feed the cats, because you're creating, you're exacerbating a situation out there where there would be more cats. It's actually not helping. If you really want to help the situation, please contact Animal Control. We don't, I personally don't want the cats fed. I'm a lover of animals, but you're not really helping the cats or anybody, and the neighbors. And thank you, Mr. Barrows, Barrows, for bringing that up. I will follow up with staff to look into the people camping outside there, and the ficus as well. I know that our city does not approve the planting of ficus, so I'm going, we do not approve that. So I'm going to look into that, follow up on that with staff. I know that Mr. Styles is taking notes right now, too. So the other items that will be, that are on the agenda, we're going to deliberate on that later. I think that that is pretty much what I have to say right now. Mr. Hughes, are you still here? If you are, it's okay, I'll follow up with staff on that, too, for the issue with that childcare center and what they're requesting.
Yeah.
All right?
Mayor, if I could.
Sure, certainly.
On the issue with the preschool that Mr. Douglas Hughes brought up, I am familiar with the situation, because I have been helping and working with the Sisters that tried to organize that school. Actually, the city had been helping them with their preschool, the one on Euclid near Lamson. What happened then was about a year or a year and a half ago, they went through and applied for the preschool permit, and because the Sister doesn't know, you know, the business and the permit process, so they make a lot of mistakes, and that's why it was delayed back then. Once the city was, understand that they are about to run out of the money, we gave them the temporary permit so they can open the school within a couple of days. That, for that particular situation, we were able to do that, because it was already a preschool there before, and they were just trying to reopening it. For this particular issue, the Sister come to me for help, and we, the city, did try to facilitate and help them, and we already put it on fast-track. The issue that we have here is, beside the construction permit, they also need a preschool business license and then permit. And because that property has never been a preschool before, the city obligate to send out notices to business and residents within 500 feet of that, and that process, that's a process that the city cannot fast-track and eliminate. We have to give the resident, you know, proper time so that they can give them input. That's why it is being scheduled for the December, I think December 3rd, or something like that. And that is what's going on. I will talk to the Sister and find out what else do they need. If they just want to go ahead with the construction permit, I believe we can do it, but they have to understand that if they start with the construction and their preschool permit, for whatever reason, falls through and they cannot get it, they have to take that risk. That is something that the city cannot, cannot, you know, do it for them.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, you know, staff to give a further explanation of that situation. And at this time, if my colleagues don't have anything else, we're all going, wait.
Just a quick thing.
Sure.
Just a couple of quick comments. On some of the speakers, I do agree with the citizen who brought forth the item of the drones, I agree, I think we should look at that. There's a lot of the proliferation of drones, the new rules and regulations coming out, I think I need to be better informed, I think our police have, if they do know the regulations in there, make sure they're relaying them correctly as they know them. So I think we should look at that, and I appreciate that comment made by the speaker. Yellow fever, we need to highlight that, if that's coming, that needs to be amplified for the citizenry to hear, loud and clear. Sounds like a pretty big issue on our doorstep. Mr. Hall spoke about Willowick. We have no, not been contacted by the City of San Ana directly about the sale or purchase, to my knowledge, for that property. I mean, a lot of that's very preliminary on the part of the City of San Ana. So I want to reassure you, I have not heard anything about any movement at all whatsoever on Willowick Golf Course. So I just want to bring up those points, just to answer some of the questions that came up, and we'll talk about, or deliberate on the other items via the red light district, red light cameras coming up. That's it. That's it. Thanks.
Happy birthday, Mr. Beard. We're going to recess. I would like to invite everybody to join us in singing "Happy Birthday" to House Member Okay, now I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Protem Steve Jones, who is the Chair of the Successor Agency.
Thank you. We'll call the September 22nd, September 22nd, wait a minute. October 27th meeting of the Successor Agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
Consent items, we just have, received and filed the minutes and approval of the warrants, and I just want to note that the minutes should reflect approval of the minutes as amended, as the items were amended at the last meeting regarding the sign on TRAS. Did I cover that correctly, or do you want to add to it?
It was the last meeting, but for the minutes of the 22nd, on the long-range property management plan, if you recall, it was amended to remove that sign on TRAS caving in. And that was, that was the approval of the board at that time.
With that, do I have a motion for the consent items?
So moved.
Second it. Call the vote.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Aye.
Member Fong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sanitary District.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fong?
Here. At this time, I believe we have the consent items. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Call for vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Aye.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fong?
Yes.
Do you have any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to the next meeting on November 24th at 6:30 here at the Courtyard Center. Madam Counsel?
Okay, thank you. We have consent items, 15.
Item 15, consent items, 15A through 15F, will be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Looks like we have public hearing tonight.
We do. 16A is a public hearing. It's municipal code amendment number A142015 regarding an amendment to Title IX to update the references, definitions, development standards, and operational conditions pertaining to massage establishments and other types of uses that provide massage services. And Maria Para is here to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight, it's a recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to update definitions, development standards, and operating conditions for massage establishments. The proposed ordinance is a response to California Assembly Bill AB 1147 that reestablished the city's authority to regulate massage establishments, subject to specific conditions. Historically, the city has regulated massage establishments by requiring approval of a police department permit, as well as through zoning requirements. Prior to 2008, the city zoning code classified massage establishments as an adult entertainment use, which required massage businesses to be located in the C2 zone to maintain distance separations from sensitive uses, as well as requiring approval of a conditional use permit. In 2008, the Senate approved Senate Bill SB 731, which restricted land use control over massage establishments. SB 731 created a voluntary certification program for massage professionals through the California Massage Therapy Council, known as CAMTEC. So under the new law, massage establishment operators who hired CAMTEC-certified massage therapists were classified as the professional service business, and jurisdictions had to treat these businesses similar to other massage, similar to other professional uses located within the same zone. So to comply with Senate Bill 731, the city established a policy that classified massage establishments as a medical use. So under the new policy, massage establishments were permitted in any commercial zone where medical uses were permitted, subject to approval of a permit from the police department. So with implementation of SB 731, the City of Garden Grove saw an increase to the number of massage establishments operating in the city. It increased from one prior to SB 731 to 23 today. And the City of Garden Grove and other cities in California saw an increase to crime associated with massage establishments that operated with licensed certified CAMTEC technicians. So to address the issue, Assembly Bill 1147, which became effective January 2015, restored local land use control over massage businesses. So the first phase of city's compliance with the new state law occurred in May 2000, I'm sorry, May 26, 2015, when the City Council approved an amendment to Title 5.12 of the Municipal Code to update regulatory standards for massage establishments. And tonight, the second phase is before you tonight to amend the zoning code to provide consistency with Title 5.12, as well as AB 1147. So the proposed amendment will include the following provisions. Assembly Bill 1147 prohibits cities from classifying massage businesses as an adult entertainment use. So the proposed amendment will eliminate any references to massage partners from the Adult Entertainment Code. The proposed amendment would also introduce new definitions for massage, massage services, and massage establishment that are consistent with Title 5, with Title 5.12. The proposed code amendment will also introduce the zoning designations for massage, and the proposed zoning would be C2, Garden Grove Mixed Use 1, 2, and 3, and Neighborhood, and the Neighborhood Mixed Use Zone. The proposed amendment would also establish distance requirements from other massage establishments, which are limited to 1,000 feet separation. Parking standards would also be established for massage establishments. Massage establishments would also be allowed in conjunction to health clubs and gyms in the C2 GGMU, which is a Garden Grove Mixed Use Zone, as well as the Neighborhood Mixed Use, subject to a conditional use permit. The amendment would allow hotels with at least 150 rooms to have massage at their onsite spa facilities. And also, the city has, since the city has the 23 massage establishments existing, these massage establishments would be allowed to operate within the same tenant space, provided they continue to comply with Title 5.12. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, you are asked to introduce a attached ordinance for first reading approving, approving amendment number A-0142015, as recommended by the Planning Commission, that reads as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-1142015 is zoning text amendment to portions of Chapters 9.04, 9.16, and 9.18 of Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to massage establishments and other uses at which massage services operate, are provided. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before I open up for colleagues to ask questions, if there are any, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Does anybody who would like to speak on this, please step forward. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions regarding massage therapy. Now, we have a lot of hotels along Harbor Boulevard, and some of them provide massage services for their guests. And I'm wondering if people can come to those hotels and pay for massage therapy without being a guest at the hotel. Also, there are a number of gymnasiums for people to go to, to work out, that also offer massage, and I wonder if this ordinance covers all of those facilities as well, if people come in that may be a member of the gym who just go there for a massage. So I wonder if it's covering all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Public, colleagues, any questions for staff, or?
I have a question for staff. Two questions. The first one is, it is listed here that there are currently 23 massage businesses operating as of now. Do we know of any other massage that we do not know and operating here in Garden Grove?
Well, the 23 are the ones that are licensed through the city. So these are all the legal ones that have the appropriate business license and massage therapy permit. There are others operating in the city that are illegal, and that's something that the police department addresses, or is trying to address. But these are the ones that, with approval of this ordinance, would be allowed to continue in the city.
Now, of these 23, one have a conditional use permit as a incidental massage, so the other 22, what kind license do they have, permit do they have?
Right, so the only one that has the conditional use permit is Imperial Health Spa, so they do have incidental massage as part of their, their business operation. And they received the conditional use permit prior to implementation of Senate Bill 731 that took away land, local land use control. So the other 22 businesses, they only have a police department massage establishment permit and a business license, but they do not have a conditional use permit.
I see. So they only have the permit from, from our city?
That's correct.
As a massage place, but not from the city?
Right, they don't, they do not have the conditional use permit, but they do have the business license and the massage establishment permit.
I know at least one massage place that is not on this list. The reason I know is because I just ran an office, and next to it, I saw a sign, you know, massage open. So how come they're not in this list?
Well, this is the latest list that I received from our business license. So these are all the businesses that have a permit through the city.
So would that be, perhaps that, that other business have not registered with our city?
Well, we could verify and see if, whether they have a permit from the city.
Okay. Second question is, this new zoning code, does this take all of the previous requirement that we passed about a few months ago into, and include that in here or not?
Right. As far as Title V, Title 5.12, those are all the regulations that actually regulate the operations of the massage. So all we're doing now is just modifying the zoning code, like allowing, identifying the zones where massage is going to be allowed, but we're also implementing definitions that are also consistent with Title 5.12. So all the regulatory standards were approved by the City Council back in May. So we're not making any changes to any of the regulations, because as far as Assembly Bill 1147, we're very restricted as far as what we could actually regulate, as far as the operations. But everything's already in place with Title 5.12.
So you're saying that all of the requirement in that, requirement that we, that this council passed in May, in, are in here?
I'm sorry?
So all of the requirement that we passed in May last, in May this year?
Yes.
Is already in this, in this zoning code? Is that correct?
It's in, yes, it's in Title V of the Municipal Code. It's not in Title IX of the zoning code, but it is in effect.
Okay. Any other questions? This is the first reading. We have waived the entire reading. At this time, we're going to entertain a motion to adopt this amendment, item 16A1.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? Okay. Please vote.
Okay. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
All right, let's go to item 17A.
17A is an item for consideration. It's an amendment to Chapter 870 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to guest registers at public lodging facilities. And Chief Elgin is here to provide the staff report.
Mayor, members of the City Council, actually, I will be providing the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On this item. Before you, it's an ordinance that would amend current provisions of the Municipal Code pertaining to guest registers at hotels and motels within the city. There are three general areas that are going to be amended in the current regulations. The first one I want to point out is that currently, the regulations require that a guest register be open at all times to peace officers, and there is a California Supreme Court that determined that that would be a violation of the Fourth Amendment on reasonable search and seizures, and therefore, and that was a LA, City of LA ordinance, that was very similar to the provisions we currently have in Garden Grove. So the first item we're doing is, we're removing the provisions that authorize peace officers to review these records at any time. Should we need to review these records, we would obtain a subpoena before actually reviewing them. Instead, we are actually clarifying that we want the records to be kept and available for at least one year's time. The current regulations don't have a specific timeline, and we're clarifying that the record should be kept at least one year. The second item is, pertains to regulations that we are proposing to add to the current regulations to prevent and to assist in the prevention of fraud, credit card fraud, and identity theft. With the advent of the internet and online bookings, you can actually rent a hotel using somebody else's credit card and go to a kiosk, get your key, because now they're in passes, and rent a room, and actually use somebody else's credit card, use somebody else's identity. In order to assist in preventing those types of fraud, we are proposing regulations that would require the managers of the hotel or the employees to actually register and get an ID to make sure that the credit card user is, the identity is the same person that had the credit card issued to them. So that's the second item. The third item is that the current regulations actually require that the records be kept with the signature of the patron written ink. And currently, again, we're keeping a lot of records electronically through PDF and through some other means. And what we're trying to do here is to bring it up to the 21st century and allow for electronic record-keeping. And so, in addition, instead of requiring that the names and the signatures be inscribed by ink, we are providing that they be enterlegibly either in electronic or type-written form in, in the form that's kept by the hotel or motel. Those are the major changes, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for 17A1?
I move the motion.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Move to 17B.
Item 17B is an approval to continue the photo enforcement program at signalized And there is engineering staff, Anna Neal, Tony Aquino, and Chief Elgin are here to provide the report.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Our presentation tonight is a carryover from the August 25th meeting, where the Police Department and Traffic Engineering made a presentation about the city's red light traffic enforcement. enforcement system. As you know, our presentation was met with some opposition from the public, specifically Mr. Jay Bieber, executive director of Safer Streets LA. You, the council, listened to both sides of the argument, and there seemed to be some questions regarding the data presented to the city, referenced the city and Mr. Bieber's report. Our purpose tonight will be to try to clear up some of that confusion and attempt to move forward. Before I start, I do think it's very important for not only the council, but the audience to introduce who's sitting up here with me. It is me, myself, Todd Elgin, the police chief, city engineer, Dan Candelaria, traffic engineer, Tony Aquino to my left, and senior administrative traffic analyst, Anna-Vigar Neal. In addition to that, I also have Master Officer Jim Tucker, who is part of our traffic unit and oversees the red light camera program. All of us are here tonight to answer any questions you may have. The city staff has conducted a second analysis whereby both reports, both Mr. Bieber's and the city's, were compared and reviewed for the differences in collision parameters and data selection. The city also took into considerations the suggestions made by the council at the last meeting. The bulk of the analytical report will be presented by our traffic engineer, Tony Aquino. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tony.
Thank you, Chief Elgin. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. On August 25th, 2015, city council directed staff to reconcile the city's red light cameras study with Mr. Bieber's study, as these two provided different results. Staff has reviewed both studies, identified the differences, and expanded the methodology to provide a more comprehensive analysis. As a reminder, Mr. Bieber's study included red light running violations, broadside collisions, rear end collisions, and collision severity. During our review of Mr. Bieber's report, the following differences in parameters were found. Concerning red light running violations under California Vehicle Code, Section 21453, Mr. Bieber states that only these collisions should be included in our evaluation. However, there are limitations to this approach. By restricting our data selection to these violations, most broadside and rear end collisions would be underreported in the analysis. This is so because if there are no witnesses to an accident, officers will be unable to determine who was at fault and therefore state the primary collision factors either unknown or other. If staff limits the study to just red light running violations, then the analysis will be incomplete and not show all broadside and rear end collisions affected by the red light camera system. The report would be incomplete. Concerning differences in broadside collisions, Mr. Bieber's analysis included broadside collisions at and beyond the limits of the intersection. Staff selected only broadside collisions occurring at the intersection or at a distance of zero feet inside the intersection. This was done to exclude collisions from motorists entering traffic from nearby driveways. Concerning differences in rear end collisions, Mr. Bieber's report included rear end collisions 50 feet prior to an intersection. Staff included rear end collisions 150 feet prior to the intersection as consistent with industry standards and with the Federal Highway Administration FHWA's research study, which defined rear end collisions as occurring on any approach within 150 feet of the intersection. Concerning differences with the collision severity index, Mr. Bieber's report proposed a 1 to 5 collision severity index to evaluate decreases or increases in severity. For his analysis, 1 point is classified as property damage only, and 5 points is classified as a fatality. For this analysis, staff used a collision severity index from the University of California Berkeley's cost benefit analysis. This index is used by all local jurisdictions when applying for federal highway safety improvement funding. Based on this index, 1 point is classified as property damage only, and 126 points is classified as a fatality. From all these findings, staff expanded the methodology, and the report includes the following: a year-by-year before and after evaluation for red light running violations, broadside collisions, rear end collisions, and collision severity. Based on this analysis, the following system-wide results were found: there was a 42% decrease in broadside collisions, a 12% increase in rear end collisions, a 56% decrease in red light running violations, and a 72% decrease in red light running collision severity. These results show a decrease in broadside collisions and an increase in rear end collisions. These are consistent with an empirical research study by the FHWA in which 370 intersections in seven jurisdictions nationwide, including three in California, were evaluated for the effectiveness of the red light camera system. The results of the FHWA study concluded that there was a statistical significant reduction in broadside collisions and an increase in rear end collisions. This trade-off additionally does have implications on overall accident severity and economic costs. With the reduction of broadside collisions, there is a reduction in collision severity and an economic impact. The city's results on collision severity are also consistent with the FHWA study. We show a 72% decrease in overall collision severity at all eight intersections. There is also an overall economic benefit with reducing severity. For the FHWA study, this economic savings is estimated at $52,000 per intersection per year. In Garden Grove, this would translate into an approximate savings of $120,000 per year. This is because severe broadside collisions are more costly than less severe rear end collisions. We can then safely conclude that an increase in rear end collisions does not negate the safety and economic benefits of a reduction in broadside collisions, and that, based on the aggregate results of our study, the red light camera program is working effectively in the city of Garden Grove. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
First question is on the rear end collision. The method by Mr. Bieber only look at accidents within 50 feet, 5-0, feet of the intersection. And our method extended to 150 feet. I live very close to a major intersection, which is about between 150 and 200 feet from the, from the intersection. And I seen a lot of rear end collision there. To me, when I look at those accidents, it seemed to be obvious to me that those that are further away, like 100 feet and, and further from the intersection, it's not directly related to the red light at the intersection, but rather, car was backing up, and people doesn't pay attention and, and rear end to the, to the car in front of it, not because of the, you know, of the, what happening at the intersection. So, so I do not understand how extending the rear end collision to 150 feet would, would be, you know, would make sense. To me, if we want to take a look at, you know, what happened at the intersection, it would be a shorter distance, like 50 feet or maybe 75 feet, but not, certainly not 150 feet. Can you comment on that?
Well, I've been in the traffic engineering business for 25 years. It's an industry standard that we look at 150 feet before the intersection for rear end collisions. It is actually also in line with the FHWA study, the research study that they did in evaluating red light camera programs in 300, in 310 intersections in the, nationwide. So we, we did that to correspond with, to correspond with that study.
So, so the, the 150 feet is, is based on the industry de facto standard?
Yes.
Okay. My observation is not based on the industry standard, because I'm not a traffic engineer, as you know. But from a practical, I live right on Trask, and only about 100 feet from, from that, that, you know, famous intersection. So I, I witnessed many, many accidents. And so my, my observation was mostly by a common people, happen to, you know, live right at the, that famous intersection. The second question that I have is, this seem to me that, that the data that we try to compare doesn't have a large sample, and it may not be appropriate for a statistical analysis. For example, at most of these intersections, the number of years before the camera go into effect is very small. And, and so we only have like two or three years at the most of the data before the red light come, come on. And, and the years that we, we have afterward is a lot. And so it, it is not easy to, to do an average statistical analysis, because it's not, you know, orange and apple. Secondly, the, in my undergraduate as a mathematics, mathematics majors, I took a lot of advanced statistics. One of the things that my, the professor always taught us is that the method for averaging, you know, used in statistical analysis is not a good method, especially for a time series. And this is a time series. We have events happen years after years. And there are many other control that can obscure the, the analysis. And so the, the average method that we use here, I think it doesn't make sense at all. I think it is misleading. I think we need to look at the data years to years as opposed to an averaging. And that's why I had asked staff to go back and give me the data on a years-to-years basis as opposed to looking at the, just as the average before and average after. Because that, that I can assure you, it could be misleading. If we take a look at a year-by-years basis, we can see that the number of accident before the camera and after the camera is all over the map. For example, if we take a look at Harbor and Trask, in 2001, in 2004, the camera was, was on operation. So in 2001, three years before that, we have four broadside, four rear end. In 2002, we have four and five. In 2003, we have three and 13 broadend. And then in 2004, which is when the camera go on effect, we have one and two. 2005, we have, I'm sorry. In, in, in the first part of 2004, we have one and two. And in the remaining part, we have one and six. So that's, I don't know how that is. So probably in January and February, that two months, we do not have the camera on. And in March and December, we have the camera on, we have one and six. In 2005, we have four and seven, 2006, 05, 2007, 03, 2008, we have one and five, 2009, 06, 2010, we have two and four, 2011, we have one and seven, and then, and so on. So you can see that the number of, you know, broadside in 2005, which is the years when the camera is on, is, is four, the same as in 2001. So, and then the rear end is seven. So, so some years, it had more, other years, it had less. If we take the average, it would not, because it's time series average, and this is not a controlled statistics, the average will not give you any meaning. But if you take a look at the year-by-years, you can see that with the camera on at the intersection, some year it, it is less, other year it is the same, and other year it is more. So to me, it is very clear that the camera have, really doesn't have any effect. Because if it, if it has an effect, it should be consistent year after year. And because this is not consistent year after year, it suggests to me that the accident is being controlled by some other factor. Perhaps, maybe that year, more people arriving, maybe that year, different type of people arriving through that intersection, maybe that year, we have construction going on. And so for, for us to conclude that camera is, is helping, it doesn't, you know, it, you know, this, this data, this report doesn't, this data that you gave me doesn't, doesn't convince me of that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. You know, we are entering deliberation. I just want to see if we have further questions for staff before we deliberate as a council. But thank you for those comments. Are there any questions for staff on this specific report from colleagues? No? Okay. Well, we'll continue the deliberation here. I don't see how a camera actually makes people safer, especially a red light camera intersections. If anything, we've seen and heard testimony from people that live in Garden Grove that it is not working, that it does not reduce accidents. I'm just thinking, education helps increase safety. A camera doesn't really do anything. All right, we do show people that there's a camera when they exit the freeway, but the reality is there are things we can do. And there are things we have done, which shows the accidents have been reduced, not because of the camera, but because we've adjusted the yellow light by half a second. And this is something that's done all across the country, and it's helped. That's statistically sound. You know, we don't have a control here in this study. You know, we can look at whatever data we want to decide how we already feel, but the reality is, we're talking about safety here. And the cameras don't improve safety. They're not teaching us anything. And what we do know is that there's more enforcement on DUI, taking those folks off the street, that's helping. Cameras don't do that. Real people do that. And I guess the, the part where I think is the most concerning is, is this really just? Is this justice being delivered in our city? When we know that the right turns on a red light, we know based on real research that it doesn't really cause any accidents. It's such, it's so minimal, yet that is what we're focusing on. And as a quasi-judicial panel, I think that's what we really, really, really need to look at. It's whether, whether this is just for our city, for our residents, knowing that the majority of the tickets issued are for red, folks running red lights, making a right turn. That's what we should think about. And the cost to it, that's what we should think about. The cost of time, of money, of stress to our families here in Garden Grove. Is it just? Is justice being delivered? That's the real issue here. I'm tired of arguing about math. You can find your math to back up how you feel. I can find mine. But as a quasi-judicial panel, I urge my colleagues here to look at it in terms of justice. And I do not see that justice is being delivered. I see the injustice right here with the red light cameras. And I think it's very valid, the points that members of the public and residents, respected residents in our city have brought up. This is hurting our families. Why is it that we want to continue a relationship with a company that has a bad reputation? That's what I'd like you to consider.
My colleague, one of the other points that I would like to bring up is, this company, Red Flags, is being charged, they have not been filed guilty, but they have been formally charged for a $21 million bribery at, with, to the city or to official at the city of Chicago. And the same thing happened for the same company in Ohio, and recently in the state of, I believe the state of Arizona, I'm not so sure about. So how could we continue working with a company with a history of bribery? And who know, you know, where else do they bribe to get their camera, you know, to, you know, maybe some other city that have, have not yet to be uncovered? So I, I, I would find it very difficult to continue doing business So I, I, I would find it very difficult to continue doing business with such a company that have a bad reputation. The data we have here could be interpret either way. I did talk to the, to member of the city of Santa Ana because they abandoned this, this Redflex camera a few months ago. And I asked them, what are the reason that they, that moved them to cancel that contract? And they told us that it's very clear. They receive so many phone call from their resident as well as from outside of the city. And people are frustrated and said that I will never travel through your city again or to your city again because you are, because I have been, you know, unjustly fined with, with, with the Redflex camera. And that is a loss to their, to their city revenue. So I, I think that, that we need to, to be careful about a micro view of whether this help our city or really hurt our city here. So I, I would urge my colleague to consider this very carefully and both, you know, keep out the, the interest of city, you know, when you make the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. If colleagues don't have anything else to say at this point, Mr. Fan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Beard?
I would, I would like to say a couple of things with regard to the program. As you know, the Garden Grove Police Department over the years has tried to maximize the traffic units' very limited resources through a combination of, of in traffic engineering education and enforcement. Most of the drivers obey traffic laws most of the time. However, some drivers, due to temporary inattention, distractions, poor decision-making, or aggressive driving, fail to stop for red lights. These instances provide opportunities for major accidents, injuries, and property damage. Photo enforcement cameras came about as a way to provide a more comprehensive traffic enforcement at the intersections most known for their collision potential. In addition, the red light camera has also been beneficial in assisting the police department determining fault at traffic investigations or traffic collisions, providing evidence in court for such things as drunk driving, and on occasion, providing video surveillance of suspects and/or vehicles during routine crime sprees. The study presented to you this evening by the city's traffic engineer speaks for itself. It clearly shows a significant reduction in broadside collisions, which are the most dangerous, collision severity, and a reduced economic impact to the citizens who live and work here. Simply put, the program worked like it was intended to do. The enforcement program is also completely managed and operated by the Garden Grove Police Department, not Redflex. It is no secret that the police department supports the program, and it is a big part of the city's overall traffic enforcement efforts. As the police chief, it is my job to assess the delivery and the effectiveness of the program. And the red light camera program has done what it was put in place to do. It potentially has saved lives, it's reduced accidents, and it's holding violators accountable for running red lights. And so with that being said, it is a critical part of our traffic safety, based on what the resources we do have in the city. And I'm asking that the council tonight do support maintaining the program and actually going through with renewing the contract.
Thank you, Chief. We've seen the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
As far as what Mr. Bieber addressed, Chief, as far as perhaps in the future, next year or so, this program would be in the red. Can you address that issue? Is that a true statement?
I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, there has been a reduction based on the fact that we've changed the yellow light phasing. There has been a reduction based on some construction in the city. So it's very difficult. But again, we're not in the business of just simply collecting fines. That program is in place to deal with whatever happens at the time in the intersection. And we do believe that not only has it reduced traffic accidents, ideally broadside the most severe, but it also holds people accountable to running red lights in the city. And we think that's important as part of the overall traffic enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie.
I would like just to make one more point to my colleague. And that is, as far as public safety, I think it is a lot more effective to have our officer patrolling the street. I can, I can relate to, you know, driver seeing the presence of a police car on the street. They would immediately, you know, hang up the cell of the mobile phone. Seeing the presence of a cop, they will slow down. And also with, with more officer patrolling the street, we would be able to see what going on, seeing all the crime other than just the, you know, potential accident or, or, you know, people driving without obeying the traffic laws. So, so I think it is the city council and the city manager responsibility to give our PD the resource they need to have more officer patrolling the street rather than, you know, using this camera and have two officer just sit at the back room and only look at people being caught by the camera. I, I think that we are more effective measure to improve traffic safety.
You know, in addition to that, Mr. Bowie, you know, if, if this is something we want for video surveillance, then we're, we're going too far. If we're saying that there's an added value because of video surveillance, that doesn't justify these cameras. These cameras do not make the intersection safer. Distractions, DUIs, that's still going to happen. It does not make it safer. We have programs that have gotten drunk drivers off the streets. That helps. That's good. That makes it safer because we're ending up, real people are there. Video surveillance system does not replace an actual human being. That's the reality. Again, we're not just looking at this in terms of the data and arguing between data. I don't want us to do that because anybody can do that. We have to look at this in our responsibility as a quasi judicial panel. Is it just? Is it just to fine our neighbors, our families here in this city for making those turns, right turns on red lights? And most of them do it very safely. They slow down. They might have not have come to a very complete stop, but they're aware. And we know that to be true. If this is really to reduce certain accidents, well, why are we targeting those that make right turns on reds? It is not just, it is an injustice to the people of Garden Grove. And I urge my colleagues to consider that most highly. There are no more questions for staff. We should deliberate amongst ourselves as a panel. And what I'm going to do at this point to move it along is I'm going to move to cancel our relationship, our contract with Redflex. Given them notice, the 30-day notice we need to give them and to stop that contract. I'd love to entertain a second on that.
Second motion.
Let's continue deliberation. Mr. Beard?
Well, I want to be supportive of the police department and statistics provided and their justification. I think it does add quite an element of safety. And I do, I don't think that if we discontinue the program that we would add more police officers if that was inferred. I think it's hard to prove the negative in saying, we don't know how many collisions were avoided because of this. You can't keep statistics on things that don't happen, but the cause most likely was the red light cameras there. So with that, I would be supportive of keeping the current program going for safety reasons. I think the statistics are there. Just from a personal perspective, I, I've been involved driving several years. It's affected my behavior modification. I know those areas. I slow down, I drive cautiously. 20% of this is affected by Garden Grove residents, and that's important to us to have that reinforced with those, our own citizens. As it relates to turning on red lights, I think you need to work perhaps on the state to lessen their requirements of, of rolling stops. I don't think we can just distinguish be saying, distinguish saying, well, you didn't come to a full stop, so we shouldn't ticket you for identifying you and recording you on camera for not having come to a complete stop. I think we're really dealing in issues that we don't want to deal with by saying, oh, it's kind of okay to not obey the law on turning on right, red lights if you don't come to a full stop. I think it's also been shown to me that it has to be activated going at a certain speed, which could be an unsafe speed and making a red turn. So I want to keep that in place as well. So I'm going to vote no on the motion. I think we should keep it in place. I think it is serving its purpose. I think we do it right as a city. I think it helps us, it helps us in avoiding additional police officers. It's a good vehicle control. It has ins, marginal value as well by what was said, said about documentation of other incidents and other situations. Saying that, I'm going to be voting against the motion.
You know, because it's a law, people try to obey it. People do obey it. Those who are caught at these, by these cameras, the justification for laws is whether it's actually making the community safer. And what we do see, based on the numbers, that folks making right turns on a red, sometimes when it's protected as well, which means that the, if I'm making a right turn at an intersection, those that are making a left of, from, from the street that's intersecting, and they can't make a U-turn, then my right is protected. The other folk should not be making a U-turn. And even when it's green sometimes, and they're not supposed to make a U-turn, sometimes they're making a U-turn. We got to be careful out there. The human being, as individuals, we're the ones that can make things safer. To target folks knowing, knowing that those right turns do not actually contribute to a lot of accidents, knowing that concerns me. Knowing that we're targeting folks. And I think that's unjust. And we're saying it's not revenue driven, but the reality is, everything is. We have to consider the cost and benefits to everything. That's our responsibility. And we know that we may be in the red if we continue with Redflex. That's what we need to consider too. Aside from what's right and what's wrong, economics don't add up either. Okay? Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
No.
Could you make sure, I want to make sure because as we make a motion to cancel it. So I just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Right, that was the motion.
So let, let me clarify. Thank you. So if you are voting yes on this motion, then you are voting to discontinue Redflex in Garden Grove. If you're voting no, that motion fails. Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
No.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn? Mayor Protam Jones?
No.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion failed, three no votes.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the program as per staff's recommendation.
Any deliberation? Colleagues, I urge you to not continue this program. We've already seen its impact upon our community, and we need to heavily consider also the economic impact and the forecast. With the improvements in technology and improvements in new standards, not just in terms of increasing the yellow light, but also in signage, improvements in our streets, it is very unlikely that we'll be able to ticket enough people from Redflex to make it worth our effort.
My colleague, I said it already, but I would like to point it out again. The data does not suggest that it reduce the accident, not increasing it. It depend on the years. Some year it help, other years it is worse, whether the camera is there or not. So if you seeing the data, and this data is from our police department, not, not from the, from Mr. Bieber. This is our PD data that I'm talking about here. If you take a look at that, some year it, it help, other years it, it worst. So how could we argue that for the sake of public safety, we should continue on with this program? And I encourage you, take a hard look at it. If we are saying that revenue is not an issue here, revenue to sustain the two officer to monitor this program is not an issue here, then we need to focus our decision only based on whether this help increase the accident or decreasing it. And the data doesn't support it. This company is a very, have a very bad reputation. Their stock now is trading at 17 cents a share. How can we continue with, with this, with this program, given that too, too information? So I really urge you not to, not to pass this motion.
If I may, Councilman Bowie, you had commented that the data doesn't support it. And I see where you pointed out, but I want to ask staff one more time. If what Councilman Bowie is saying is true, that it doesn't support by the numbers, why are we saying that's increasing safety? Is there like, are there two different ways or we're looking at the same data here?
Yes, Councilmember Fan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council, I'm Anna Neal with the Traffic Engineering Division. And yes, we do see a lot of different ways of looking at data. We have Mr. J. Bieber's report, we have our, our report. And, and there are differences in between how we select data. However, one of the things that I wanted to, to pay attention, for us to pay attention to was this nationwide study. And this was done in 2005 by the Federal Highway Administration, by the U.S. Department of Transportation. And it's an empirical study that looked at seven jurisdiction nationwide that included 370 jurisdictions, I mean intersections. And their conclusions are, are consistent to ours. They say that broadside or T-bone collisions do go up and then rear end collisions, I'm sorry, broadside collisions do go down and rear collisions do go up. So there is a trade-off, but they also looked at the economic impact of, of those collisions. And, and the results are the same. There, there is a trade-off, there is an economic impact, but this study was very rigorous and very thorough. And then not only did include like research boards, but it also cited different institutions and different, different analysis. So it's very thorough and it's consistent with ours.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. You cited a 2005 study, it's 2015, it's 10 years later. A lot has changed. And you know what reduces accidents to and creates better driving? Experience. That's what insurance companies look at. Insurance costs more for young kids because they don't have experience. For older folks, it's a lot cheaper. And for women, it's cheaper too because they're better drivers than men.
Yes, we are.
That's statistics, right? Well, 10 years later, that is not a reliable study. So many things have changed in 10 years. So many things have changed in Garden Grove within the last year. Okay? So let's, let's consider everything here and not just, you know, hang our hat on that.
Yeah.
Sure, Mr. Bowie.
My colleague, Councilman Fan, Councilman Jones, Councilman Beard, let me ask you to take a look at our police report on page number four. Could you? Could you please? Now, we are saying that ever since the camera is on, it helped, consistently helped reducing accident. I don't think that is the case here. If we take a look at this year by year, and we do not need to be a mathematician or statistician to see this, just your common sense. Now, in around July 1999 is when the red flags camera was turned on. So before that would be when the camera did not have it. The accident at Brookhurst and Westminster intersection, and I would say the broadside number first and the rear end second. So in 1996, we have two broadside, two rear end. 1997, we have four and eight. So that's the highest. In 1998, we have zero broadside and five rear end. Now, let's take a look at 1999, July and December of 1999. We have two and four. In 2000, we have three and eight. That's a new height. In 2001, look at the number, we have three broadside and 10 rear end. So the number is going up. In 2002, it go down to one, and rear end will be eight. And so if we go on, it fluctuate between, after 1999, it fluctuate between zero and three. So it keep going up, three, one, zero, three, one, and one, and two. And so it's all over the map. In term of rear end, it goes from eight to 10, to eight to three, to nine to six, to nine to four, to three, and so on, for every single year. So if we take a look at the, just the pure data, and this is the data from our police department, it is clearly that the number of accident doesn't seem to correlate with whether the camera is there or not. It based on many other factors, which I have no idea of what causing the accident to go up or go down. So to say that keeping the camera will keep our streets safer, I don't buy into that conclusion at all.
I don't either. That's very true.
The one thing that really tilts my decision is our police chief's recommendation. You're on the ground, you're fighting the battle, and the last thing I want to do is to pull a rug from underneath you on something that you really need. If you were to tell me, "Well, you know, I'm 50/50, guys, I don't know how to get this in a role," then maybe I'll go, you know, the other way on the decision. But when our chief is saying that he needs to do his job, I would not undercut him. We've seen disastrous consequence when people who are not in the trenches try to second-guess those who are. And so for that reason, and the fact that I think there are other collateral benefits to the cameras, that's why I will support the continuation. As for red flags and their problems, when they go under, you know, the cameras have to go away as well because they can't support it. But like the chief said, we're the one who are in charge of the cameras, not red flags. They may monitor it, and they may try to keep it running as far as the maintenance, but as far as how it is conducted, it's our purviews. Therefore, until I see other data or something different from what I see here, I would like to continue with the program until the chief tells me differently.
Okay, before we call for the vote, it looks like we know how it's going to go. I think what would reduce accidents, and I'd like this to be done, is put up more signage. I think we should put the fine up as well, let people know. I think that we need to remove the cameras targeting right turns, because we already know if this is for safety, the enforcement on right turns are not making things safer. They're making things more hard for our hard-working families in our city, our working families with their kids, making things more difficult, putting stress on our families. I think it's very important for us to look at that. We're unfairly targeting folks. That is to make money. That doesn't make things safer in any way, okay? Because if we look at the data, look at the data, folks that make turns, right turns, aren't causing much of any accidents. So how can you justify continuing targeting those folks? How is that possible? We really need to look at the reasoning behind this in terms of who we're representing as city council members, who elected us, who's holding us accountable. I think that's really key. And I don't think it's just, like I said earlier, I don't think it's just that folks have to go through these hoops, have to pay these fines, because I actually think it is unfair enforcement. It is discriminatory enforcement to target just those folks and those particular intersections. And I think it's true that as a for-profit business, that red flags knows exactly where to place these cameras, and that they helped us study and place them in these locations. I'd like to see the cameras at Harbor Boulevard and Trask removed, because when you're driving down and it's a really bright sunny day, you're driving under the freeway, overpass, and you come out into the light, from that transition between dark and light, you may not see things clearly, especially if you're an older person or you're visually impaired, not to a point where you can't drive. But even for ordinary folks, that time for you to transition, that gap is not very big. There's what, only, I think it's even less than 100 meters from when you get out from the overpass, and then there is an intersection with the red light cameras. I don't think it's just.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Now, the mayor's made a lot of point about the right turn and why we have that as a prohibition or the camera taking that. Can you explain to us why that's the case? What are we trying to prevent from happening?
Can I call Master Officer Tucker up to the mic up there, and he can explain the issue with the right-hand turn and the speed at which the red light is actually triggered?
Sure, go ahead. What is your name again?
Master Officer Jim Tucker. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm a 26, soon-to-be 27-year veteran. I worked primarily in the traffic bureau my majority of my career. Having been a motor officer for six years and a primary collision investigator for the city, I have a bit of experience, and I've worked our photo enforcement program for nearly five years now. I've initiated the program in our city since 2000, when we initially started this program. But I can tell you, the problem down at Harbor and Trask, there's a lot of problems down at that intersection, one of those being that it's right off of Interstate, or excuse me, State Route 22. If you've traveled on that state route, any time of the day or night, it backs up eastbound. People have a tendency to get off the state route there, and they're going to come off on Trask Avenue there, and they're going to proceed to the intersection there in question. And it, in the morning, or in the afternoon, or even in the evening sometimes, you're going to get to that intersection, and you're going to run into another clogged intersection. People are generally in a hurry when they're traveling at those times of the day, and they're going to come to that intersection, and they're going to negotiate students going to the school. They're going to negotiate a since widened intersection. We just recently widened that to handle more traffic to the resort area and to the freeway itself. So they're coming to an area that's even more congested, not only with pedestrians, but with bicycle and other traffic as well. So, you know, I understand your frustration with the right turn on red there, but it's a very dense, very populated, there's high-density apartments there as well. And it's just a tough area in Orange County. I believe, in the day, Mr. Aquino, you could probably back me up on this, but this is one of the worst intersections in Orange County, at least back in some time, to my knowledge it was. I'm not up on my statistics at the time, but this back some time ago was one of the worst intersections in Orange County. So it's got a lot of problems, but State Route 22 is primarily one of the reasons why it is the way it is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for bringing up that point. You know, State Route 22, the 22 freeway, and folks getting on and off, and traffic backing up, that's a part of the problem. And these cameras aren't making things necessarily safer. I see folks that are running reds because they, I believe, feel entitled to make that turn, even though it's red because they've been waiting in such a long line. And our traffic signals aren't coordinated with the state's on-ramp system, with those meters. We need better coordination between city and state. With Caltrans in our city, we don't even have really any communication. And what our Public Works Director has told me is that we don't have a say in that. We should, we're the people. We should have a say in that. We should partner with other cities in the Association of California Cities, Orange County, which we're a member of, and the League of California Cities, to get those issues resolved. That's something we can do. That's something that can improve not only safety, but also traffic flow in our city. That's why we should do that. There's reasoning for that. We should try those things first. Now, continuing this program, again, is bad for our families. It's hurting us. And it may hurt the city as a whole financially, too, because based on trends and based on these improvements, such as extending the yellow light, we may not be generating enough revenue. We may not be ticketing enough people. And now that this discussion is going to get more airtime, folks are going to watch out for these red light cameras, too, and drive better. Please drive better. That's going to help reduce accidents, too. Other cities have already gotten rid of this program, because it doesn't help. There's been lawsuits as well.
Well, to my colleagues, if you are not ready with your analysis to vote on this, especially Councilman Fawn, you seem to vote beyond the chief recommendation, but not on what you think really going on, then I would suggest that we, I hate to put it on hold, but I don't want us to hurriedly vote on something that we haven't really studied carefully. That's mainly area that we need to concern with, from the financial, economic perspective as far as to, you know, whether this is an effective way to increase public safety and reduce accident. I would find it very difficult for us to vote because someone tells us to vote one way or the other. I think we owe it to our constituents that we need to study this, and this is not an easy thing to, you know, to see. So, you know, I do not know where we go down here, but I think we need to be careful in our vote.
There is no substitute motion unless you have one. I'm going to...
One last comment.
Sure, Mr. Beard.
I'd just like to present the fact that this program encourages people to stop at red lights. I could ask the police, I know what the answer would be, if they had an officer on the street, they saw someone run a red light, would they give them a ticket? Yes. If they saw them making a right turn, not coming to a complete stop, would they give them a ticket? Yes. Would recording serve the same purpose? Yes. So I think we're making it more complicated than we have to. I mean, I obey the law. I come up, I drive pretty conservatively, I'll admit that. But I know if you get one red ticket for any of these violations, you're likely not to do it again. That's behavior modification. I think it works, it's proven. So I think we can get as passionate as we want about this subject. I think it's just a matter of obeying the law, driving safely, stopping at red lights, driving under the parameters of the law, and I think that's what this program promotes and does. So I want to continue going further. I don't think any more study, at least not on my parts, needed. So I just want to go ahead and put the motion, I want to call for the motion.
Okay, I'll take that call to your question. Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
No.
Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen.
No.
Motion received, three yes votes.
We have a vacancy on the planning commission.
Item 17C.
I'm sorry.
Item 17C is to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Hacker Equipment Company for one sewer cleaning truck, and Bill Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Palmeri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight council is being asked to award a contract to Hacker Engineering, or actually Equipment Company, for the purchase of a sewer cleaning truck. The truck will replace an existing vehicle that meets the city's replacement guidelines that includes age and wear. Additionally, the new truck will add a vacuum capability to the standard jetting function, which is required to comply with state and federal waste discharge mandates. The purchase will use the National Joint Powers Alliance bid to take advantage of its large-scale purchasing power. The NJPA represents multiple public agencies and offers this service to its member agencies, and we are a member. As such a city bidding is a process is mute. Hacker's winning NJPA bid was $450,646.20, and that includes taxes and destination charges. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor could begin work on the truck and should deliver the truck within six months. The truck was included in this year's budget and will be paid for using $73,270 from the fleet management fund, and the remaining monies will come from the sewer replacement fund. There will be no impact to the general fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. When's the delivery of this truck? Have we approved it today?
It's going to take them about six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I wish it came a lot earlier.
Me, too.
There's a lot of work to be done before O'Nino comes. But this has been budgeted, which we did vote on already. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Aye. We're going to move into 18A. There's a vacancy in the planning commission. We're declaring that here now. Is there a motion to do so? I move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Vote, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Second.
Jones. Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Aye. So that information is going out there in the public. We do encourage folks interested in serving to apply, and I will make an appointment at the next council meeting, based on the applications. Okay, so 19A.
19A is information regarding requirements for adopting a Mills Act program as requested by Councilmember Fawn, and our deputy city manager is here to give a report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The purpose of this report is to provide information regarding the Mills Act and what adopting a Mills Act program for the city would require. At the September 22, 2015, City Council... At the September 22, 2015 City Council meeting, Councilmember Fong requested, and the City Council concurred, that staff provide information on what adopting a Mills Act program for the city would require. The Mills Act is a state law and economic incentive program in California for the restoration and preservation of qualified historic buildings by private property owners. Under the program, cities are allowed to enter into contracts with the owners of historic structures that provide for a reduction in property taxes in exchange for the continued preservation of the property. The city must first establish a list of historic properties which would allow the property owners to participate in the program. Property taxes are then recalculated using a formula in the Mills Act and Revenue and Taxation Code. Mills Act contracts have a minimum term of 10 years and are automatically renewed annually for an additional year. Thus, unless the city or the owner files a notice of non-renewal, a Mills Act contract always has a term of 10 years. Either the property owner or the city may elect not to renew for any reason. The effect of non-renewal is to terminate the contract at the end of the current 10-year term. During the remainder of the contract term, the property taxes increase gradually to the normal level. The owner may also petition the city to cancel the Mills Act contract. Cancellation requires assessment of a penalty of 12.5% of pre-Mills Act valuation. The city may also cancel the contract, but only in the case of a breach of the contract conditions. Once a Mills Act contract is terminated for any reason, the property owner's taxes increase to the level they would have been but for the Mills Act contract. Many cities throughout the state have adopted Mills Act programs. I believe there's over 80 of them in California. In Orange County, seven cities, including Anaheim, Brea, Dana Point, Orange, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, and Santa Ana have programs. The city of Orange charges an application fee of $1,000 to offset the cost of administration of their program. The California Government Code section, the California State Government Code allows cities that enter into Mills Act contracts to charge a fee not to exceed the reasonable cost for providing the service. As noted earlier, the first step in implementing a program would be for the city to establish a list of qualified historic properties which would allow the property owners to participate. In 1986, the city hired a consultant to compile an inventory of the city's historic resources. At that time, 132 properties in the city were identified with some level of historic significance. Staff anticipates that this document could be updated by a consultant in conjunction with an evaluation of the city's residential tracts to serve as the basis for participation in a Mills Act program. Additional steps to implement a program would also include adoption of a historic resources ordinance with procedures for designating local landmarks and procedures for property owners to obtain Mills Act contracts. It would also include adoption of a resolution to participate in the statewide program. We would have to create program documents and related forms. Each city establishes their own criteria and determines how many contracts they will allow for their own individual city. We could then establish a fee to cover the cost of providing the service. At this point, the city could, once fees are established and we have all the ordinances and program in place, we could then accept applications for participation in the program and begin to review those applications. We would then conduct initial property inspections and prepare 10-year work plans. We would be required to finalize contracts, including City Council and review of each of those contracts, and then we would conduct periodic inspections to ensure proper maintenance of the properties. Rough estimate for consultant work to draft an ordinance, develop Mills Act application procedures, and establish a list of historic properties that would be used to support a program could be done for somewhere in the range of $50,000 to $100,000. There are presently no funds in the current year budget for this purpose. The cost, as I mentioned earlier, for administering the program could be paid through a fee charged to participating property owners. Reduced property taxes generally are in the range of 20% to 60%. Those reduced property taxes would be offset by other economic benefits such as conserving resources, reinvestment, you know, the hiring of local craftsmen, architects, and of course, increased community pride. Should the City Council wish to provide funds to implement a Mills Act program, the City Council could direct staff to include funding in the fiscal year 2016-17 budget for this purpose. This concludes staff's report, and Acting Community Development Director Carl Hill and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Fenn.
Yes. You know, what kind of gives me pause is the cost of the startup. It seems a lot of money to start up this program. We have a list here of 130 sites that we have deemed in the past to be of some historical value. Would it be feasible if we shoot them a letter saying, would you be interested in this program if we were to establish one? Because I would think if they came back with 130 responses of yes, I think it'd be worth it. But if we have 10 responses back saying, yeah, we'd be interested of the 130, it may not be worth the squeeze for us to start this program based on the cost of how much we'd start to get this off the ground.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so to that point, it was kind of interesting. I spent a little time talking about this issue with the city manager in Orange, Rick Otto, and Orange has a robust historic preservation program. They limit the number of applications that they take in to 10 every year. He did say it's a bit of a cost to the administration. They spend, I think they have a dedicated staff person that manages the program full time. Now, of course, they've been through a number of years now, they have a number of properties that are registered, keeping them all certified, that sort of thing. You know, what was sort of interested in Mr. McIntosh's comments, and I think some of the members of council have asked me some of the same question, that is there, without having to get too deeply into full-time staff work and other things, is there some way to, you know, take some baby steps to kind of get to accomplishing some of our goals? You know, I think the speaker talked about trying to allow people to register directly with the National Trust or whatever, and so there are some costs long-term. Whether there's some things we can do to minimize those costs, you know, might be open for further discussion.
On the same vein as what you just said, Councilman Fenn, I think I would react to this more if there was some visible groundswell of interest in it, not being sort of pushed by the city, spending money to send out letters, but rather just kind of formed organically. I mean, otherwise it's cheaper for us to just pay your property taxes if it's just your house. So I mean, I'd like to see more interest from this group. I know Santa Ana has the program, I think it's limited there to just owner occupants. I don't know if that's a Mills Act requirement, or if that's, or if the eligibility is sort of open city by city, but I mean, it really narrows the playing field if that's the case because it would weed out all the commercial properties and weed out all the non-owner occupied properties for eligibility. So, yeah, I mean, just based on the list, I'm not sure how many people would actually take advantage of it, and I mean, if it's, if it was just yours, it's obviously not worth $50,000 or $100,000 to start it up.
Or we possibly could, like on our website, have a survey of some kind where it's not going to cost us any money.
Yeah, 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 I'm hip to that, yeah.
But having people input and, you know, perhaps give their information where they live, so that we're not just saying that, you know, any Joe person can go in there and say, yeah, I want to have this done, but at least some sort of backup, just to say that there's an interest in the city.
Yeah.
I think it is important for us to preserve history, and I would support it, but I would like to see that we have guideline and policy so that it would be fair to all, you know, residents who would like to apply for this program, rather than just doing it on an ad hoc basis. So it's fine if we just want to see what the interest is from our community, but once we have an interest, we need to invest and, you know, outline a guideline and policy before we proceed.
I agree. We can move on to 19B now, there's no further discussion on this item. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, should we ask staff or direct staff to perhaps do a survey online or at least have it accessible to the public?
I think we can have staff explore some more options and maybe discuss it. You know, that's something that's actionable, really.
Okay. We can't hear from him.
Well, okay, I'll make the exception. Mr. McIntosh?
Thank you very much. I'd like to just add a short comment that the fees associated with this are not necessarily that, I don't want you to be intimidated by these fees, and I don't necessarily see that they're necessary. Should we create a small committee of local historians that are able to handle all the work involved so that staff was barely involved, maybe one hour to review what we have put together and presented with the National Historic Registration in place per property? And may I also add that our general plan suggests, I believe it's element, Section 2, land use, Section 3 suggests that we do go forward with registering these three properties on the National Historic Register, which would be my home, the lake home, the former first mayor of our city, the beautiful colonial home just up the street here, which was recently for sale and could have been bulldozed and turned into condos. It would have been a huge loss for our city. There are residents, not even just of this city, but other residents in Anaheim and Orange, who have told me that they would be more than happy to assist any resident here in registering, and we would do all the work that staff would not need to be tied up with. There's no reason to hire an outside consultant to do this. We can handle it. So I'd like to continue the further discussion at some other time down the road, should I be able to put something together for you. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'm definitely open to that, definitely open to exploring. I think there might be some kind of middle way here, and that's what I'm looking for. All right, 19B.
19B is a resolution establishing a policy authorizing the release of law enforcement records exempt from disclosure under the California Public Records Act in certain circumstances involving elected public officials, as requested by Councilmember Bowie, and our city attorney is available to give that information.
Do you want me to...
Mr. Sandoval?
This item is on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Bowie at your last meeting. He requested that the City Council consider adopting a policy whereby records that are exempt from disclosure under the Public Records Act be subject to release if a public official is involved in the investigation. So I came up with some language, proposed policy that's presented to you, and the policy would be, would say that notwithstanding the exception in Government Code Section 6254-F, city clerk and police department records staff may release law enforcement complaints and investigatory records, including code enforcement records involving elected public officials whenever no other exception applies, and disclosure would not interfere with an active law enforcement or code enforcement investigation. In discussing the policy with Councilmember Bowie, he would also want to make sure that this policy is prospective, so if the City Council adopts it, it would not apply to past records, past investigations, it would only apply to events and to records created after the adoption of the policy, and that's what item 2 provides. It provides that the policy and resolution shall be applicable and effective only to records prepared and events occurring after its adoption by the City Council. So the policy is there. If you have any questions, you need clarification on any of these items, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but at this time, it's council policy.
Thank you. You know, this, Mr. Bowie, would you like to speak on it first, since you brought this forward?
Yes, yes. I brought this thing up because of, after two things. First, after I complete the FPBC Ethic Training for Elected Officials, one of the sections there talk about not only city council or elected official need to be doing the writing, but we need to pay attention to public perception that we indeed do the right thing and public trust. And so reflecting that with the promise that we will be transparent, I think it is important that we would allow member of the public to know what's going on when it involve, you know, elected official. And also, to be fair, I think, you know, if we adopt this resolution, it would be for, you know, day forward when the resolution is being, or this policy being adopted, so that, you know, member of the council from the previous council would not subject to this because they was, when they say or what they did, they wasn't aware of this policy. So I think in order to maintain trust from the public, and in the spirit of the FPBC ethics, and in the spirit of being transparent, I think all of us need to be held to the highest standard, and for that, we, you know, whatever we say, whatever we do, we need to consider that it could be, you know, released to the public. There is a clause here that, given the city attorney oversight, so that before some record being released, if he's determined that it could cause potential litigation liability for the city, he can intervene and stop that. And in fact, all of the requests still have to go through, our city will need to make that determination before it be released. The only difference here with this new policy is that sometime, public may request information, and the city attorney determine that there is no harm releasing it, but he can't, he cannot unless the city council would ask him to release it. And the city council won't be able to act on it unless two of us would agendaize it and vote on it. And I think for us to go to that level, just to get, you know, the information to the public, is a cap overkill, and so that's why I would like to, you know, suggest that we would consider passing this resolution.
Thank you. Have you read the Government Code Section 6254-F? Mr. Bowie?
Cap lightly, but not, I did not study it.
Mr. Sandoval, how many pages is the Government Code Section 6254-F?
It's actually a fairly long section. It includes most of the exceptions to the requirement to release public records.
So my issue is, if you're going to bring something forward, Mr. Bowie, I think it's only fair that if you're citing something in a resolution you're bringing it forward, that you would know it and you would not just read it. And also, may I? And also, my other issue with this resolution is that it really doesn't have much teeth at all. And let me read the resolve statement. "Notwithstanding the exemption in Government Code Section 6254-F, the city clerk and police department records staff may release law enforcement complaints, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." That's not a shall. So this is another, one of those resolutions that, you know, we can vote on it, sure, no big deal. Doesn't really do much.
I can...
I can explain why it says may as opposed to shall, and that is because there may be other exceptions, and there are some exceptions such as one that Mr. Flores alluded to earlier, which is the balancing test.
I'm sorry, what test?
Balancing test, sixty-two fifty-five. And sixty-two fifty-five says that we can, or the city can withhold the public record if the public interest in releasing it is outweighed by the public interest in keeping it private. Under that section, that's the requirement that if the city makes a determination that the public interest in releasing it is not outweighed, or is outweighed by the public interest in keeping it private, then we have to identify who made that decision when we issued that denial. That's not the case here, Mr. Flores asked for a police record, and police records are specifically exempt under sixty-two fifty-four F. And, and that's why this policy only deals with sixty-two fifty-four F and only applies if no other exception in sixty-two fifty-four F applies. And it says may because currently, our policy is that if a record is exempt, there is no officer in the city that has authority to determine that, notwithstanding the exception, we're going to release a record. So, the policy is if it's exempt, we're not releasing it. Under this policy, if it's exempt but meets the policy, it will be released unless some other exception applies.
I think it should be more clearly stated than may because I don't know what the justification would be to release or not to release.
If the report includes private information of a third party, not including the public officer, then that brings into question whether it's appropriate to release a record, notwithstanding the fact that an elected officer is involved in the investigation. So, that, that's one situation where it may not be appropriate to release, even though it would otherwise fit the policy that is written. Now, this is proposed to the City Council. City Council may well change the may to shall.
Right. The, the, the difference here is, the reason we, we choose the word may instead of shall, like the city attorney have explained, is that this resolution is trying to address an issue where someone requests a police report of, of incident involving member of the city council. The, the city attorney cannot release it because he's under this, this, you know, Government Code, section sixty-two fifty-four. He is not allowed to release it, and so he categorically denied. He, for the information to be released, it only the city council can direct him to release it. So, what, what we try to accomplish with this resolution is that it would allow the city attorney to look at that, and if he doesn't see any issue, then it will be released. But if he see an issue, it, then it, he will stop it, and then it will be up to the city council to, you know, make the determination whether it should be released or not. So, so that's why we want to use the word may instead of shall, because we want to have, you know, the city oversight in, in making that determination. But if, if, if this council would like to make it into a shall, I have no, no objection to it.
If I may, City Attorney Omar, as far as changing the word may to shall, does that have a lot of, any legal implication? Like, are we running afoul of any laws when we change that, that wording?
No, it would not.
Okay.
Under the Records Act, City Council can actually adopt a policy that is even broader than the exceptions in the Public Records Act.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would want to have some oversight, brother fat, but I see here if we wish to be transparent a hundred percent all the way, go shall, you know, full, full board. I agree with that.
That's even better. I was wondering that it may not get passed, so that's why we settled with a may.
Are you okay with that friendly amendment, author?
Yes.
Okay.
Change it to a shall.
So, that would, that would kind of circumvent other exceptions that currently apply, like you mentioned, like if there was a unrelated third party involved, da, 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 then it, it shall get released regardless of the effect on the third party or something in the example you gave.
Well, we can still work with it. I think that by changing it to shall, we would not be involved in a balancing test. But if another exception does apply, then we would not, we would not be releasing it. There are some records that are specifically exempt, so if they're specifically exempt, we still would not release it, even with the changing the wording to shall. For example, medical records are specifically exempt from disclosure, social security numbers. There's, in addition to sixty-two fifty-four, there are other sections of the Public Records Act and other sections of the Evidence Code, and the Government Code that specifically exempt certain records from being disclosed to the public. So, we would still follow those.
Also, in addition to that change, I'd like to make sure that this policy is implemented and effective for all existing records. So, this is not to go forward, but this is to open up all records that pertain to relate to the resolve statement for all of our records pertaining to elected officials, public officials, elected public officials, et cetera. I think in the name of transparency, we do need that. I mean, if anything, we should assist our DA in terms of expediting the work that they've been working so hard on here in Garden Grove. So, I think that this is a policy. I support it, and I support it wholeheartedly, not just in terms of moving forward, but for all records, really, that have been requested, that pertain to elected officials, whenever no exemption applies. I mean, we are abiding by the law. Why would we just do this moving forward? We should do this, you know, in all time. That's the best way to be transparent, and I definitely support that. So, shall we do that? Is that possible with, with adoption of this, Mr. Attorney?
If the City Council removes item two?
Yes, I, I would like to remove item two. Is that okay in the name of transparency, colleagues? And, and author, is that okay with you?
I am even happier with that.
Wonderful, yes. Okay, so the amendments are, just to keep things organized here, in, so there's only one resolve statement, starting with notwithstanding, and within that first sentence, within that sentence there, may is now shall, and number two of this policy and resolution being applicable and effective only to records prepared and events occurring after adoption to the City Council, that's being removed, so it applies to all, in all time. I, thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Bowie. Would you like to move it?
I would like to move the motion.
Second?
To pass it.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay.
Item nineteen C is a discussion regarding potential sister city partnerships, as requested by City Manager Scott Stiles.
All right, Mr. Stiles.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be very brief, but I wanted to bring this subject up only because members of the, I know council knows, but members of the public may not know, the city of Garden Grove, we have a sister city relationship with our sister city in South Korea. And recently, we've had some additional conversations. The mayor and I have met with consulate of Mexico in Santa Ana about some sister relationships in Mexico. I know the mayor, Councilman Fawn, our community service director have talked to some other folks about other possibilities, and I wanted to bring this forward only to let council know. We've had some of these very basic preliminary discussions. Obviously, if any of this were to go forward, we would bring it, it would have to come forward to the full council for approval and to let you know that the city administration will be willing and continue to work as requested by any and all of you on development of any of these sister relationships. I don't know if the mayor, Councilman Fawn, or anybody else wants to comment on it, but I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention, that we've had some of these conversations. I would expect that we would continue, and some of them meet, may lead to some fruition of something, and, but it will certainly be coming back to you for any consideration of anything. So, I kind of wanted to just bring it forward in that vein.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. I think, you know, Garden Grove and our great sister city of Onyoung, South Korea, has been a, a very fruitful relationship, and thanks so much to staff for continuing that relationship. I know that this proposed and these kinds of brainstorms on sister cities really should involve more people, and it really should involve folks that really have the spirit of, you know, engaging internationally with other sister cities. So, I, I encourage folks to, you know, continue to share their thoughts with me. I've been approached and by, by some folks that wanted to have, you know, certain sister city relationships, and I, I'm looking and exploring them. You know, personally, I think that we're, we're already such a diverse community here in Garden Grove, and we should explore any sister city relationships that have meaning to us. And in particular, as a, as someone that was born in a refugee camp, you know, in, in a United Nations refugee camp, and hearing, you know, folks who are former refugees, who are now Americans here in Garden Grove, and, and they want to pay homage and, and, and give gratitude to those places across the globe that have assisted them on a journey to freedom here in America, I think that's something really unique. So, I'm going to continue to cultivate those relationships out there, to see whether we have that kind of energy, you know, before we, you know, present it to all of council. You know, I, I know that Palawan is, is one of those sites because there was a Vitville, there's a community there. Unfortunately, when we met with somebody from, from that region, they weren't necessarily the kind of official that, that we were looking at being in a relationship with that would be comparable, that would, you know, match, it would go well with Garden Grove. But we're, we're still exploring. I know, I don't know if Councilmember Fan, you want to chime in, but personally, for me too, I, I wasn't born in Palawan. I was actually born in Thailand, and I, I like to see a sister city relationship with that. You know, it's actually a resort town now with lots of hotels, which is similar to Garden Grove. So, that would be a good match, but there's also a, you know, significance to a lot of Vietnamese-Americans here, so I, I'd like to entertain that. But I think we really have to build this momentum and this energy to keep it sustainable. You know, the, the Onyoung program is great because we do have direct student exchanges. They, you know, honestly, the Onyoung folks are so generous and nice. I think they sent us more things than I sent them, to be honest. And I, I love it. I think it's, it's, it's an awesome thing, you know, to know that, you know, there is someone watching out for us, you know, across the globe, and that we can call a sister, you know. So, I like the spirit of it. I just want to see, you know, more energy. So, I actually, you know, encourage the public and also my colleagues, you know, to explore those, you know, options.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask staff, like, when you do have possible meetings with other sister cities potential, let the full council know if you could, because I think, short of any Brown App violation, we'd love to be there just to see what it's like firsthand, so that we can actually discuss, you know, why, more wisely when we get together to make the decision to go on with the sister city program.
All right. I have, I, I do want to bring back the issue of putting out a request or proposal for our legal counsel, for our city attorney, but I'm not going to do that tonight. But I do want us to continue thinking about it. I haven't forgotten. I know I wanted us to have some more time because we're still inconclusive, and, and I know the register reported on that too. So, I still want to keep that there and put it on the back burner, you know, consider and weigh all the different things that you got to weigh. And aside from that, I want to really appreciate staff for collaborating in the community with Community Action Partnerships, with OC Pitch. You know, what we did earlier today with the ribbon cutting in East Gate Park was awesome. Folks came out. I saw, you know, my former classmate from Pacifica. It's, it's a great thing what we're doing, and seeing Senator Janet Nguyen, you know, come home for that too. This is a great thing for the community, and I just want to thank staff because you all put in a lot of time to develop these relationships, to make sure these public-private partnerships happen in our city. And there is something tangible that we can see, we can use, and we can be healthy together. So, I, I really, really appreciate that. I want to express my sincere thanks. Any, Mr. Beard?
Well, I'll echo that sentiment to Parks Recreation People. Parks do make life better, and that proves it with the exercise equipment we saw at East, East Gate Park today. We have four in the, in the city now. Thank you to staff for all your work, Kim. It's very much appreciated. And I just want to recognize that, and thank you for the cake tonight.
Okay, Mr. Bowie? Just want to say happy birthday, and may your victories come true. You only got three, so select it carefully.
Are you a genie? That's okay. Mr. Fan?
Happy birthday, Chris. You're holding up quite well at age forty.
Thanks.
Also, this Saturday, guys, we have the Miss Garden Grove Pageant. It will be over at, on the, near the corner of Harbor and Chapman, I think at the old dance hall there, at address two-two-three-two South Harbor Boulevard at six-thirty. So, please come out and join us.
How much are tickets?
I think they're free, but don't quote me on that, Mr. Mayor. I'm not quite sure. I didn't talk about the, I didn't ask about the cost.
That's definitely not accurate.
Okay. I said, "Don't quote me."
So, thanks for the invitation, though.
Yep.
Mr. Jones?
Just happy birthday, Chris.
Happy, thanks.
Awesome. Happy birthday, Chris, and have a great celebration. We're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Dick Walters, as requested earlier by Mr. Mitchell, and also in honor and memory of Mark and Genie Homsel.